Let me show you how to shake your lemonade. You don't have to jump on anybody's train. Don't you sweat it when they're throwing you the shade. You can make it. Pick it up, sip a sip a cup of tea. Yeah, looking down from where you thought you'd never be. A paparazzi flash cashing off the scene. You can make it. Make it what you want. You can make it. You can make it what you want. You can make it. Make it what you want. You can make it. Open up or else I'm knocking down the door. Gonna make you wonder why you never tried before. Strike a match, start the fire, boy for boy. You can make it. It might get crazy, but just take it by the horns. Make room for everybody tearing up the floor. Now clap your hands, do the dance, make it yours. You can make it. Make it what you want. You can make it. You can make it what you want. You can make it. You can make it. You can make it. Make it what you want. You can make it. You can make it what you want. You can make it. You can make it what you want. You can make it. Make it what you want. Go on. Clap your hands, do the dance, make it yours. Now clap your hands, do the dance, make it yours. All right. Now clap your hands, do the dance, make it yours. Now clap your hands, do the dance, make it yours. Make it what you want. You can make it. You can make it what you want. You can make it. Make it what you want. You can make it. You can make it what you want. Make it what you want. You can make it. You can make it what you want. Make it what you want. You can make it. You can make it what you want. Make it what you want.
Wonderful. Good morning, everyone. If you will please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, univocal, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. Individuals wishing to address the City Council will be directed to approach the podium. Please observe a three-minute limit for communications, and once called upon to speak, we request that you state your name and city of residence for the record. Opening up today with communications from the public, this portion of the agenda is intended for general public comment only on items within the council's jurisdiction that are not listed elsewhere on the agenda. Please note that state law prohibits the City Council from discussing or taking action on these items. Please observe a three-minute limit for communications, and once called upon to speak, we request that you state your name and city of residence for the record. If you wish to address the City Council, please approach the podium. Good morning.
Morning. So, it's apparent to me by the fact that this is what the third one of these meetings, that you guys don't give a shit what anybody says. I do. I think that people do. I think that people matter, that they're able to participate in a meeting and see what you guys do. And the systematic stripping of all the substantive items from the meetings is, it's an affront to democracy. It's an affront to transparency. There's people up here that would claim credit for, like solving the Lindbergh kidnapping, you know, or finding Gabby Petito. Yet, nothing about this meeting. Nobody's crowing about this one. So, you're gonna handle all kinds of stuff that's very substantive, very interesting, that other people would definitely want to participate in and want to hear. Yet, you're doing it on a Wednesday morning with a fake agenda, you know, set up so nobody can participate, you know, just so you can get done with your business because you think it's your business. It's not your business. It's everybody's business. You really, I mean, I've just, every time I think something's going good, I mean, I can give the city manager credit for outstanding hires, but I wonder why some of the outstanding hires haven't gone, "Hey, you know, this is wrong. This is wrong." You know, you're basically just daring people to sue you. You know, and that's not how a transparent city functions. You know? And look at him. He's just sitting there with a smirk on his face. I could see it from behind. Yeah, yeah, you, with the smirk on your face. You know, I mean, it's just, it's, this is, this is why people don't trust government. This is why people think that, that you're working against people. This is why. Because you're here on a Wednesday morning having a little, you know, somewhere between a self-affirmation thing and just a getaway, just an escape. It's not a retreat. It's an escape. Oh, we don't call it a retreat anymore. It's a workshop. You know, you could do this at a study session. You canceled the study session practically. I mean, you had like one item. You could be doing these items at places where people could see it, and you're not. You choose to come here where nobody can be here. It tells me, it speaks volumes about where your heart is about this whole thing. Thank you very much.
Anyone else this morning wishing to address the council and public? All right, seeing none. Let's move on to opening remarks. So, good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. We have these fall workshop once a year, and it's really a space for us to talk about ideas that are not yet all the way baked through. So, this is a new feature. We're happy to have folks participate, and we're excited for a day full of discussion. I'm gonna kick it over to Mr. Ellis. So, start us off with a couple of remarks, and then we'll get right on. Mr. Ellis?
Thank you, Mayor. We are all very excited to be here today as your staff team and as a, and I know, joining with all of you to be able to talk about some topics that are really important. We're gonna be covering a lot of things today. We're gonna be talking about city services, some of our state advocacy efforts and the results that those have yielded this year, talking about some of our revenue and finance as well as just organizational policies and practices. And many of the topics that we're gonna be talking about are things that you have heard from our residents that they want to hear you discuss. There are things that have either generated from a problem that we've seen in the city. They are an idea or an opportunity for us to make things better in Corona. And so, as you mentioned, once a year, we get together in an all-day workshop to be able to really take a deep dive and have meaningful conversations about these things. I know that we have received a lot of positive feedback from the community who watch these online. These services are all broadcast and livestreamed. People are able to view them from the comfort of their own home. After the meeting, we index each one of these presentations so that anyone who might be interested in a single topic that was talked about, they can get online and just watch that portion. And so, we hope that this continues to foster improved dialogue and frankly, better policy and making improvements in the city. And so, we're excited to be here. The goal today, certainly from the staff standpoint, is to get clear direction from you as a council. Hopefully, you will see in many of these presentations a variety of options or different paths that we could go down. We'll talk about some of the pros and cons of those different decisions. And what we're seeking from you is clear direction on where you want to go based on what you have heard from residents and what you see in the community. I will say, a huge amount of effort and work has gone into preparing for today. So, we hope that you find the information useful, that it sets you up to make informed decisions. And with that, we're ready to jump in. Mayor, with your direction.
Okay, let's get started. We're gonna start with city services. And the first presentation today is going to be by Chief Young, who's going to present a report on Corona Fire Dispatch Services. Good morning.
Chief, we don't have your volume on yet. It doesn't sound like.
How about now? There we go. I'm incredibly excited to be before you this morning to talk about an opportunity for some significant innovation. Is that echoing really bad?
A little bit.
Yeah. She'll dial it in for us? All right. So, what we'll be looking at this morning is how we conduct our Fire Dispatch Services currently and what the recommendation for the future looks like. Check the remote, Ashil. Sorry about this. First one out.
It's part of our traditional tech check beginning the meeting.
All right. So, a pretty simple ask for the council this morning. It's consider alternatives to our current dispatch services, enable fire, specifically the fire department, to meet their strategic plan objectives, and then really provide staff, namely me, with the path forward and direction after this presentation. So, I think it's important to provide some contextual background to what current Corona Police and Fire Dispatch Services look like. There's a terminology that's commonly used in the dispatch community emergency services called a primary safety answering pointer, a PSAP. Common term, meaning that any 911 call that comes from the geographic area within a city limits or a jurisdictional limit comes into a PSAP. So, all of our Corona residents, when they call 911, it comes into us as a PSAP. If the call comes into a county and a corporate area, it either goes through the sheriff's department or county fire. And then, a lot of times, if it's on the freeways, it'll go through a call forwarding from CHP. It's important to understand the concept of PSAP. That PSAP handles both 911 or emergency calls and non-emergent calls. From a point of context, as far as volume from the Corona Police Dispatch Center, in 2020, they received 235,000 calls into the dispatch center. And when you look at that on a scale, that's significant. Of those, about 46,000 were 911 calls. So, 20% were 911. The rest encompassed other types of calls. Another example would be crimes that had already committed in the past was 35,000. So, almost 15% of the total calls were crimes that occurred in the past. So, one thing a little bit different from the fire police model is, is people generally don't call in to 911 saying, "I had a medical aid that happened yesterday." So, you can see already, there's some kind of divergence in business practices that occur. Another thing that's important to understand about police and fire dispatches is they operate on what's called a computer-aided dispatch system. You'll hear me use that term a lot this morning. It's commonly referred to as CAD. I know a lot of people know that as computer-aided drawing, but in this context, it's computer-aided dispatch. And then, the current system we use in Corona is what's called an on-prem service. So, it's rack servers in a physical location that require physical touch and maintenance and cost to maintain that. And the last thing I want to touch on that will come into this discussion is emergency medical dispatch. And this is a skill set that is maintained by the dispatchers at Corona PD who handle the fire consoles. And what this does, this allows the dispatcher to triage calls, assign appropriate resources for them, and then provide pre-arrival instructions. So, obviously, I mentioned that one of the asks is enable fire department to meet an identified strategic plan objective. So, the overarching one is number four, which is safe community. And this applies to all emergency services, really because it's to improve public safety services and emergency response, improve response times and increase capacities for the city's emergency response teams. And we look at those strategic objectives and how that drives into what we're talking about this morning is two of those strategies. One was to explore opportunities to adopt best practices in computer-aided dispatch systems and then improve emergency response times to meet or exceed national benchmarks. Many of you may recall that we did an operational audit of the fire department in 2019 that was conducted by an outside organization that is a subject matter expert called City Gate and Associates. They've done thousands of these things throughout America. And one of the primary findings they found is that our primary call processing time was not meeting the national standards. The average was three minutes and 23 seconds to process the call. And we'll talk about some of the causative factors to that in a moment. But the national best standard practice is one minute and 30 seconds. So, there's a significant delta there between those two. And once again, we'll explore what some of those background situations are. So, how do we accomplish meeting our strategic plan objectives? So, I bring forward three different ways to do that, and they're all tied together. And the first of that is to implement a cloud-based computer-aided dispatch system. I'll come back to that in a second here. The second would be to focus on a fire-centric dispatch center. I'll give you more detail on that as well. And then, in order to accomplish both of those, it's gonna require us to create a partnership and potentially contract with somebody else. So, when we talk about a cloud-based computer-aid dispatch system, it's really focused on seven fundamental strengths. And those are, I'll go through these. I actually took notes on these. Obviously, I didn't want to retain seven fundamental strengths to memory. The first of that is accessibility. So, a primary component of any cloud-based system is that you can access it anywhere, at any time, do the redundancies of the system with data centers that are spread out geospatially, strategic locations, whether it be nationally or even internationally for that matter. So, accessibility is huge. Cost is a significant impact. You'll see a price point that we talk about with a cloud-based solution, but the important part of that cost is looking at the long-term implications. When you're using a cloud-based solution, you're not responsible for the hardware at the data centers. You're not responsible for the maintenance. It's all built into your costing. So, it decreases the necessity for multiple layers. It adds capacity. When you have a fixed system that's on premises, it requires you to basically have that capacity of what you need at that time. So, anytime you want to add or increase, you have to add more and more hardware, add more personnel to support that. This is, the next item is a big one, and that's enhanced security. We've all seen information coming out from our IT department about the significant ongoing threats that we're dealing with, both in the public sector and in the private sector, denial of services, ransomware attacks. So, another benefit of having a cloud-based solution is you've got 24/7 high-level security that is managing and maintaining those data sets and those data centers 365. Obviously, in a government setting, we don't have that capacity. We can't have an IT staff that's on the ready 24/7, 365. It's a lot more efficient to conduct it this way. Scalability, we already talked about that a little bit with the cost and the ability to upgrade. The deployment of it's much more rapid due to the fact that you're not putting in significant racks and servers on premises. And then, ultimately, all of those things tie together for continuity of operation. And an important thing to know is that the CAD that we're talking about, this computer-aid dispatch we're talking about, is a true cloud-based solution. And the reason that they use that terminology working closely with IT is why it's a true cloud-based solution is that it meets all of the advanced requirements to be technologically sound. Every time something changes and gets better, they take it and they change it and they move with the actual industry itself. One of the greatest things with a cloud-based solution is it requires for a much more rapid integration of other software solutions. So, I actually didn't know what this acronym meant before. So, I've heard the term API quite frequently. Everybody knows probably what an API is. It's the bridge that brings two software solutions together so they can interact. But the actual definition of that term that I've used for years is application program interfaces. So, what this cloud-based solution does is it allows us to bring all these fire-centric solutions into this one big machine. I'll give you some primary examples that help with our efficiencies. I'll give you some primary examples that help with our efficiencies. Records management system is fully integrated. Station alerting systems are fully integrated. So taking it from the call to the CAD system to the alarm, all integrated, much more rapid. You've heard me talk multiple times about the Pulse Point app and the integration. Continue call to improvements integrated, as well as emergency medical dispatch. So this is really the future of computer-aided dispatch, and it's really a necessity for forward evolution. So the second item that we talked there, we'll get into a little bit more detail on these next two items, is seeking out a strategic partner. So when we got the results back from City Gate, we started to do some introspection and say, "How do we solve some of these problems?" And we had to ask some hard questions, including even considering finding a partner outside of our traditional system. So timing was fortuitous, and we'll actually hear from representative from Ontario Fire here in a moment, but they are a true fire-centric dispatch center. They, like Corona, were at one time a combined police-fire dispatch center. Early on, they saw some of the conflicts that occur from a business perspective, from a systems perspective, that are less than opportune. So they were in the process of getting this new cloud-based CAD. Bingo, that's perfect, too. They're a fire-centric dispatch center, which affords us a lot of things, and we'll bring that up in a minute. Intuitively, I think we would all agree that we make that assumption that having a duplication of effort is more cost-efficient. But in this case, there's unknown complexities that come into that that I think are important to talk about. One of those is just the fact that there's two different language sets. So our dispatchers at City of Corona Police Department that service the fireside are incredibly gifted and talented to learn multiple skill sets. But it's not unlike talking two different languages. The terminology is different, the processes are different, the training requirements are different. So that adds to the overall, I would feel safe to say, stress of the position. If you're having to learn two different skill sets simultaneously and have those interchangeably interact, it impacts overall efficiencies from multiple characterizations. So I talked about Ontario going live with their CAD. We talked about a large price point, but realized that this is for the full implementation, and they're burdening themselves. Their council approved this earlier this year in summer, approximately 2.95 total implementation costs, that once again, us partnering with them, fortunately, they're the ones taking the overall responsibility for that. One of the other benefits of seeking out strategic partnership with the Ontario Fire Department, with a fire-centric dispatch center, is they're one of only 14 accredited dispatch centers in the state of California. So once again, I like to use the word context a lot. It's like, well, what does that mean? 14 of what? Who cares if you don't give me the total context of that? There's 440 dispatch centers in the state of California. So if 14, they're in a select few. So only 3% of the dispatch centers in the state have that qualification. And it's extensive, rigorous process. They have 20 major data points that have measurable skills and measurable outputs that they have to measure, and they have to maintain that. This isn't just a everybody gets a trophy award, obviously, with 14 out of 440 having that. Another significant benefit of creating a strategic partnership is our staffing would double. So we would go from a peak staffing of two to peak staffing of four. And you say, "Well, that's only four people." But it's a significant change, because not only is the staffing doubling, the total work impact's decreasing. You know, we talked about that 235,000 total calls into Corona Dispatch in 2020. Fire only had 14,000 911 calls. So we're getting significantly greater staffing with significantly lower call volume. And then, we talk about faster 911 call processing. That's a significant desire for us, and the causative factors that are driven by the staffing issues, meaning less staffing in our current model. And then obviously, the CAD itself is a lot more efficient with this cloud-based CAD. It's more fast, it's more effective. And then, the last item I'll throw in there is obviously with more staffing, we intuitively get more radio frequencies. This has a twofold benefit, is it allows us to run simultaneous calls on different frequencies, which make it a lot easier for the responding resources. And then more importantly, it increases crew safety. I know safety is thrown as a buzzword very frequently whenever somebody wants something, but in this case, it is a very accurate and applicable statement to use because they have more opportunity to speak on different frequencies with less conflict. So a big, big significant with that strategic partnership. So with that, I'll transition for a slide here to the Ontario Fire Director of Administration, Jordan Villock. He's going to share some more value-added components from this potential partnership.
Is this working? Sounds good to me.
I'm not sure, I think so. Okay. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and City Council members, and thanks, Chief Young. As he said, my name's Jordan Villock, and I'm the Fire Administrative Director for the Ontario Fire Department. And before my current position, I actually had the pleasure of serving as a police and fire dispatcher in a combined center for more than 12 years, both as a dispatcher and as a shift supervisor. A little bit that Chief Young wanted me to speak on today is kind of the history of where Ontario Dispatch has gone. And in 2012, when it was managed by the police department, it both had police and fire dispatch responsibilities under them, they started looking at a few challenges that they wanted to address. One of them was recruitment, another one was retention, and another one was the fact that they're seeing the missions really split between the police dispatchers and the fire dispatchers. So with that, they started a staff study report and started to dive into the weeds. One of the things they looked at was the technology was changing so significantly in the dispatch realm, that they're really going from, maybe when I started as generalists, being able to answer a call, get a location, and send help, to more of a specialist where in emergency medical dispatching, the dispatchers are telling people to give Narcan over the phone, delivering babies, providing that help between when they first call 911 until the police or fire department arrives on scene. Where the police department's really diving into the weeds a little bit more in regards to license plate readers, the systems they log into, I can speak on Ontario Police Department, the police dispatchers log into almost 20 different systems where they're running people for officer safety, they're monitoring cameras, they're looking at a lot more complex data on the law enforcement side. So these missions are separating. And part of this study that we did, they looked at in 2012, six dispatchers that resigned from their center. Of those six dispatchers in the exit interview, they all cited they were either laterally into a different department, or resigning because of the stress of the duties of learning both functions. Trying to be those specialists in both areas of being able to answer one 911 call and deliver a baby, and answer another 911 call and try to track cameras, and try to look at license plate readers, and all the intense requirements to be a police dispatcher, made the stress of the job even harder. So there's complexities of response plans that are growing in the fire department. As you guys all know more than most of us here in the area, the wildland urban interface and the complexities of the vegetation fires that go into it, the standards of operating procedures and having to be up to snuff on what the new rules are on each type of dispatch center, it just created a lot more stress for them. So for Ontario Fire Department, when we separated in 2013, we have a staffing of nine dispatchers and five supervisors that are under the fire department. And in the last three years, the Ontario Fire Department has not hired a full-time dispatcher. The recruitment and retention has increased for both the police and fire department. When the police department was looking at this survey, they saw that they were running on average no less than 20% vacancies in their dispatch staff because of the dual-role responsibilities, where people were looking for jobs, are looking to be specialists in the area, not the generalists, as I talked on. Currently, Ontario Fire Department, with our staff, has almost 200 years of fire dispatch experience. And of that, 152 of those years are actually with the Ontario Fire Department. So we're seeing a good retention, and we're not having problems with recruitment. One of the other things that Chief Young wanted me to speak on a little bit is the emerging technology and the opportunities down the line with having a fire-centric dispatch center. And one of them is called the Emergency Communication Nurse System, which is pretty complex, but if I can break it down a little bit, that it's basically on low acuity calls, those calls where perhaps you don't have to send your most expensive resource, a fire engine on a call, you're able to transfer the call to a nurse that's trained, that can go through a series of questions. With this nurse communication system, they can actually do this concierge service, if you will, and break down the call of what this individual really needs. Do they just need an appointment at an urgent care? Do they need transport to their doctor? Do they need to schedule an appointment at Kaiser? All the way to, if it's determined by the nurse that it needs emergency medical support, they transfer the call back, and then the dispatch center can dispatch the fire engine or the units appropriately. So what we're seeing is about 10% of the calls, the low-acuity calls, that we're able to send in this way. And it solves a bigger problem in the system. It frees up the emergency rooms. Because right now, the only option we really have is the fire department. We respond, and the person either signs and release that they don't want to go to the hospital, or they go in an ambulance to the hospital and go into the ER. So it's really solving that challenge, and it's also just providing that better service for the patient. Not everyone that calls 911 needs to go to a hospital. So it gives us another option, and that's something we're currently in the trial with, with San Bernardino County, and something that we're excited to see come true in the future. So with that, Chief, I'll go ahead and turn it back over to you.
Thanks, Jordan. Appreciate it. All right. Next couple slides will go a little bit more rapidly. We've kind of covered the core components that I wanted to get out there. Obviously, one of the questions that often comes to me from the council members is, "Okay, that's all good and fine, you're the administrator, you're the chief, but what do your men and women in the field feel?" And I think that's incredibly applicable in this situation as well. So after we did the original data discovery and seeking a strategic partner, we said, "Well, let's get the feeling of the men and women on the street." So we created a survey that asked a lot of specific questions about functionality of our current system and ways that it can improve. And then, I threw this slide in there because it's just really indicative of their current satisfaction level. The last one is, "How would you, or would you recommend our current CAD provider to another fire agency?" And it wasn't anything other than unanimous. All 26 respondents of fire captain and above said, "Nope." I think that's the exact term they used. So we've already talked about some of the shortcomings with a combined system. So real quickly, I'll cover the positive community impacts with this proposed new model. Obviously, better emergency response routing, that's directly tied to the previous slide with the input from our field resources. Enhanced call processing time, and this is directly attributed to the significant increase to staffing, as well as the augment of a cloud-based CAD system. It supports our service delivery evolution, as Mr. Villock just spoke about, the addition of the ECNS, of the Emergency Communications Nurse System, coupled with our low-acuity response model, just further enhances what we're doing and what we're moving into the future. We talked back several months ago about that low-acuity response model. 28% of our calls will roughly be handled by those units in that geographic area. And as you heard from Mr. Villock, if 10% additionally of those can be handled by the evolution of the ECNS, it just further creates additional resource availability for more acute and dangerous impactful calls. And then the last one is, there are some significant positive benefits to police dispatch. Their training requirements drop rapidly. They're not having to learn two different skill sets. They're allowed to become incredibly specialized in a single skill set. Their retention will likely improve, as well as their workload will decrease at some level. Now remember, the PSAP's still going to receive those calls, so we still need the personnel in the center, but the overall deployment of it will be greatly enhanced. So what does this look like fiscally? Obviously, that's the primary driving factor from a lot of your decision-making points from a policy perspective. So when we started this discussion in seeking out a partnership with Ontario Fire, our first question was, "Well, what does it cost? What's the bottom line?" So we're looking at roughly $500,000 a year for this evolutionary solution. $100,000 of that is based on the technology, i.e. the cloud-based CAD, the radio connectivity. And then the dispatch services, the human component, is close to $400,000. So it's $497,000, so we round it up to five. And it's based on 14,000 calls a year. So from an industry standard perspective, that is how you frame the cost of services for dispatch function. Obviously, with the scale and the complexities of our current model, we can't capture that as a carve-out from fire because of the totality of it, the inconsistency of the up-staffing and things of that nature. But it's good to have a comparative. Once again, I always use that term context. So the contextual comparison for this $36 a call is based on Southern California multi-agency dispatch centers. These are all fire-centric dispatch centers that are located throughout Southern California, from San Diego to San Bernardino to Riverside to Los Angeles County. The most expensive is $89 a call, which is Verdugo, and the closest to a price point that we're dealing with is LA County at $40 a call. There's two significant adds to this. Not a single one of these six dispatch centers, for their fire-centric in nature, have a cloud-based CAD solution, and many of these are actually at capacity currently right now with their rack servers and their on-prem capacities. Secondarily, only one of these six is an accredited dispatch center. Confire, which is also in San Bernardino County, is accredited, not unlike Ontario Fire. So there is a possible offset. So the question always needs to be asked, "Okay, if you're changing service, there has to be a delta somewhere. There has to be a way to save some money somewhere in this discussion." If we're not talking about eliminating full-time positions because we don't want to impact overall efficiencies from the police dispatch side, there was a pretty significant offset, and that was with the up-staff requirements for the police dispatch center to have overtime for the fire dispatch. So we're looking at approximately $110,000 potential offset with the overtime cost savings. And as I already mentioned, the non-fiscal impact is significant. A better work-life balance, decreased workload, and a big issue that's facing all dispatch centers is the mandatory forced overtime, which definitely impacts overall health, wellness, and happiness of the workforce. So as Mr. Ellis mentioned, we do have some options for you. The first option is to remain status quo, which would mean that we are unable to meet our strategic plan objectives with the fixed staffing, the lack of the evolution to ECNS, and with a non-cloud-based CAD. Obviously, that's a no-cost item. Option two, which you'll see is going to be the recommended option, is going with a cloud-based CAD. Through a strategic partnership with Ontario Fire, we will double our staffing, we'll double our radio frequencies, and we will have the evolution of an ECNS or the nurse dispatch system. Option three would be to copy what we're seeking in Ontario here in Corona. And you'll see on that bottom right, it becomes relatively cost-prohibitive when you look at the $3 million CAD startup costs. Just the FTEs, the full-time equivalencies for the dispatchers alone, not even taking in the ECNS, is $850,000. You add the ECNS, and it actually goes up even significantly larger due to being higher-paid positions. So as mentioned, the recommended option is option two, partnership with Ontario Fire. This meets our strategic plan objectives and enhances efficiency and effectiveness, and it's a fiscally prudent alternative for a system-wide evolution to move the fire department into the future from an emergency response capacity. The ask for council today is just to direct staff to continue working on this proposal, and we will bring it back to you for full approval in the normal budgetary process next year. So it's really looking at that guidance due to the fact this is a significant policy change. We want to make sure that you understand what's going on and you're willing to support this move forward. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. All right. Let's open the floor to my colleagues for discussion and direction. First one to grab the mic, Councilmember Richards.
I just had a couple of questions. When you partner with the Ontario Fire Department, is it a contract? And how long is the contract? And how do you get out of the contract? Or how do you make sure you stay in the contract?
So all of those will be clearly defined, and of course, Dean Shopp is wonderful at making sure that the interests of the city are protected. It would obviously be a year-to-year type thing after the initial period. My assumption would be, is it five years, the initial contract?
Five years with a year-one opt-out clause. I mean, we could always build escapes in there as well. We're not worried about this not meeting our needs. It's so technologically advanced, we're excited for it, but it will be explicitly identified in the contract. As Mr. Villock said, it's a five-year contract with some opt-out clauses.
And then, excuse me, thank you. The only other question, I just want to make sure I understand it right, so the cost to the city is $500,000 a year, but is that after? So the cost to the city is $500,000 a year, but is that after subtracting the $110,000 in overtime?
No, no. So hypothetically, the net would be 400.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Steiner?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. You know, I think any time where we can reduce response times from a minute, minute and a half, that definitely saves lives, so I'm very intrigued by this. Confirming we would not lay off any dispatchers.
Absolutely not. There's a significant need for staffing that will not be impacted. Because it's important to note, and I mentioned this briefly, is the initial call for service still comes into Corona PD. So they are the PSAP, and then they get some brief information, they validate the address, and then it's forwarded to Ontario. So the call-taking services don't change. The big change would be the actual handling the call from that point forward. So there'd be no staffing changes.
Okay. And then Chief Newman, you know, obviously, this impacts you and your members as well. Can I get your perspective?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Steiner. I support the plan. I think this does open up opportunities for a work-life balance for our dispatchers that they have not had in quite a number of years because of decreased staffing. The, as Chief Young mentioned, the 225,000 calls that they receive each year will not change. We will still receive those 225,000 calls. 85% of them have been traditionally police-related. However, this is, they're still going to be that first line of contact, that first responder. And this opportunity relieves one and a half positions for our dispatch that we can take that position, or those position a half, and rotate them into our police dispatch service, our answering phones, our backup, and our primary dispatch, which would then allow us to provide vacation and home life opportunities that they haven't had the experience with recently.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Thanks, Chief. Yeah, I'm very intrigued. I love the idea of saving time and getting a better response for our folks. But my questions are, A, so when the call comes in, there's that transfer. What's the transfer? What's the experience going to be like for the resident that calls in?
So it happens already right now, depending on where they are, right? So if they live in Cornita, they already go through that process. So one of the benefits of a call forwarding situation is you're required to validate that address. So that's already occurring on a regular basis, right? And it has to occur multiple times to be validated under the accreditation process. So they call 911, it comes into the PSAP, they basically state their emergency, they verify the address, and then a single-button push forwards that call with a CAD-to-CAD connection to Ontario Dispatch. So to give you a point of reference, the average dispatch processing time right now in Ontario Fire is a minute and 3 seconds. So significantly faster, even in the national recommendation of 1:30. We anticipate using up that 30-second delta with that call forwarding process, but it's all part of the overall call processing. So we'll still be able to meet that target of 1:30. So they call in, they state their emergency, and it's forwarded immediately. And this happens on a regular basis. The agency I worked at previously, a lion's share of our calls came through the Sheriff's Department. So it's a normal industry evolution to go through the PSAP.
So the answer, when the person gets transferred, is the dispatch in Ontario going to answer Ontario? I'm just worried about confusion.
It says fire dispatch, right?
Is it going to say fire dispatch?
Yes, sir. It would say fire emergency, so they would know they're talking to the fire department immediately.
Okay. Okay, great.
Yeah, it'll be transparent to the caller. The only difference is that they'll be asked the initial question twice. But once again, it's a validation, they have to do that anyway.
Right. Okay. And then on the cost part, we're short dispatchers right now, right? So would we still have that same level of folks that we're looking for after this, if we do this, that we would still have the same level of staffing? Or would we just not recruit all those positions?
No. We are only one short right now, or two, really, but we're looking to replace two supervisor positions. So we're potentially four understaffed right now. And we are looking to get to staff. And even, remember, this fire dispatch model that we currently have with fire and police is only one fire dispatcher, you know, with 28 budgeted dispatchers. So it doesn't, it provides relief where that one dispatcher can rotate into other shifts that are basically vacant at this point and provide that relief for current dispatch model. But it's not anything that we're looking at to reduce the entities. Now, we just incorporated, you know, two call-taker positions into our budget in fiscal year '22. So I would have to reevaluate that to see how necessary those positions would be as years progress.
That's my question. I know that we have a shortage, and we have had one for a while. Whether or not this would necessitate still that we would still be trying to reach that staffing number. Okay. And then the last thing, the one thing I noticed on the comparative, the cost per call, do we have a cost per call for Corona?
We don't. Do the complexity of it is if we were to just carve out the 911 calls for fire, it's an incongruent comparative, right? So the lion's share of the calls that come in for fire are 911-related. We don't have as many non-emergency calls. So to carve that out is incredibly complex due to the point of the daily staffing. So you only have one position of that total floor, and sometimes it goes to one and a half, sometimes it goes to two. So we do not have that number. And that question was actually asked by Mr. Ellis, if we could carve that out specifically. And right now, we don't currently have that capacity. Do the complexities of it. We could give it a shot, but there'd be a lot of assumptions based on that desire because it's putting two incongruent things with different measurables in it and comparing two unlike things.
Okay. And you mentioned earlier about that they're going to allow to dispatch more effectively. I've been on a couple of ride-alongs, and I think of the five calls that we went on in the one, the afternoon I was there, two of them were folks that just needed to get transported to the hospital. There was an older gentleman that just needed transport, but we rolled an engine and everybody met there. Is this going to, that going to change that at all?
Absolutely. Remember, that was our goal with the low-acuity response model. Is at least in that core of Station 1, 2, and 3, where the most call volumes take place, is to send the right resource for the call. In those ancillary areas, we're still going to be sending the big fire engine every single call because of call volume. As I mentioned in the presentation, though, is as we continue to move down with the emergency care, Emergency Communications Nurse System, it just adds even more to that, sending the right resource. And sometimes with that evolution, it's not sending any resource. That would be phenomenal, is to be able to handle a 911 call, somebody's emergency, determine that it's not truly an emergency, and just direct them where to seek alternate care, maybe even an Uber ride. Sometimes it's that simplistic.
Okay. Yeah, that was one of the things that truly just surprised me because, and I know that's one of the reasons we made that change, I was just curious whether or not having a nurse that's answering the phone will be able to...
It will. It'll help. And you obviously know that's my desire, is to be more efficient and deliver our resources more appropriately and not have a one-size-fits-all, right? The old hammer analogy.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Daria?
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Vilwak, are you open to questions?
Just wanted to make sure before I start asking you a bunch of questions.
If the Chief permits it, absolutely.
Okay. So my first question is, currently, does Ontario partner with any other municipalities?
Currently, we do not.
So why is it that you have additional capacity that you want to take on a partner?
Correct. So we used to dispatch for the Chino Fire Protection District, and they left our center back in 2019. Most of the reasons because of that was due to technology. Our current CAD system, before we're moving to SOMA, has a lot of, doesn't have the robust complexities of the response of the fire service today, which is why we're moving to a cloud-based, more robust system. And so they desired at the time, before our administration changed in the fire department, that they were going to go to a different JPA model of a dispatch center where they had a vote on the, you know, they could have a little bit more input on the direction of what that current dispatch center is. It's CON FIRE in San Bernardino County. So they had left. So we did not reduce the dispatch capacities in Ontario Fire. So we have what's a bandwidth, is what we call it. We currently dispatch about 22,000 calls for Ontario Fire Department, but based on our staffing models and comparing with the industry standards in Southern California, we have the bandwidth to go up to about 60,000 calls before we would have to augment that staffing pattern. Because like you guys, we have a high interest in keeping customer service to the height. We're comfortable, you know, adding, if we find the right strategic partners, more in the area where we can share a lot more than just dispatch services potentially, we're comfortable sitting around the 50,000 calls per year mark in the center.
And so when do you plan to introduce the SOMA system?
So we have a go-live date of May 1st.
So then, my next question is regarding that ECNS system. What percentage of those calls go back to 911? So if I understood it correctly, the call gets triaged and then sent to a nurse who, or the concierge service, and they try to figure out if they could help them that way, which I get. I mean, it seems like that makes a whole lot of sense. But what percentage goes back to 911?
That's a great question. And so I did find that answer this morning. It's about 44%. And the main reason because of that is because of the transport complexities. Because San Bernardino County, this is where we're doing it, there's a lot of remote areas being the largest-sized county in the nation by miles, that sending an Uber to someone that lives in a remote area is a challenge, right? So there's a lot of different pieces that are coming about, but it's basically just because of the transport piece, not because their problem can't be solved at a low-acuity level.
Okay. Thank you. Chief, a couple of questions for you. The other council had asked a lot of them, and I was concerned, have you had, or would that be part of the process for our IT department to kind of assess these cloud-based solutions? One of the downsides to cloud-based solutions is that there's constant updates that need to be done. And so when you talk about security, these are areas for perpetrators to really get into them. Oddly enough, I happen to know a little bit about cloud-based businesses, enough to be dangerous, I would assume. But so, is that part of the process that you're recommending? So 100%. That's a great question, and I probably should have brought up in my presentation. So when we originally had these discussions with Ontario and we saw the potential to be innovative and go to a cloud-based solution, I said, well, I'm not a cloud expert, but we have some significant cloud experts. So both Chris McMasters and Kyle sat on the RFP process to make sure that the needs and desires were met from a city's perspective. Okay. And then the other question is, it's really early, so I actually had to use the calculator for the math, but Chief Newman was saying 225,000 calls a year, 85% are PD-related. And the pricing that you have here is based on 14,000 calls. And if I did my math right, there's a delta of about 10,000 calls that are fire-related. And so I'm curious, what happens if we exceed the 14,000? Yes, so the nice part about using that measurement as far as what your pricing is, it takes away the ambiguity of CPI or any other index you may use. It's actually tied to a service, right? So when you look at the scalability and cost increases that are built into any contract, any build-in would basically be tied to the actual call volume or the call for service. As far as the delta discussion, it kind of goes back to Councilmember Speaks' question is, it's very complex with the magnitude of what they're talking about. The numbers I used were merely off of the Corona PD annual report as far as that breakdown. So I can't speak to your delta question, but I can speak to the pricing question, which the nice part about that is it's directly tied to a service versus just a magical number that's out there.
Councilmember, can I clarify that for you? I apologize for the confusion. But so our center receives 225,000, 230,000 calls. Not all of those are entered into CAD. So we entered about 100,000 calls for police and fire into our CAD system. 85% of those 100,000 calls are police-related, so 85,000 calls, 14,000 are fire-related.
So those other 130,000 calls, they're not a need for service?
We call them administrative calls, so a lot of them are forwarding to other agencies or they're triaging, and they're not entered into their online reports, they're referrals for other reasons like that.
Okay. And then I had one other question. I guess that answers the delta. There really isn't when you figure out the numbers. How many of our current dispatchers are, for lack of a better term, bilingual? They speak fire and police. Are they all that way?
It is a requirement in our current model, because we are police and fire, that you must go through four months of fire training, which includes the emergency medical dispatch training, which is quite long. And then you do the remaining amounts of months in police backup and primary training. So all of our dispatchers go through that same process.
So theoretically, in the future, we wouldn't need to, we wouldn't need to train new hires in this bilingual process? Is that correct?
Accurate, yes.
And is there a pay differential right now because they do both fire and police?
They do receive an emergency medical dispatch stipend or incentive pay.
Would that go away in this model?
That's not my goal, but that's something that I think would be discussed in the future.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, I just have three follow-ups. I too am concerned about the experience from the caller's perspective. So when this returns to us, if we could please dive a little bit deeper into maybe like a flow chart or what the experience currently is and what it would be with this kind of model, I think I would really appreciate that.
So I have an audio file. I just didn't want to get into the details of it because it adds time to it. One statement I'll have to that, and I apologize for interrupting you, is that this isn't something new, so I will be happy to share that and show the call processing and let you hear the audio of that. This happens industry-wide. It happens every day in the city of Corona already.
Okay. I would be interested in hearing that.
Absolutely.
I'd also love to have this, when this comes before us again in further discussion, a larger context of the approach that we've had with dispatch already. I know, Chief Newman, we've taken measures since your tenure to try and help dispatch. I'd like to, you know, Councilmember Steiner's point about your perspective and how this plays into it. I'd love to have that discussion because it leads to my final point, which is if, what you mentioned earlier, is that this split just happened in Ontario in summer of 2021, right?
No, '13.
In '13.
Correct. 2021 was when they secured the city council approval for the cloud-based CAD system.
Got it. So then, and that goes into effect in May.
Correct. Yeah, so their split occurred almost a decade ago.
So then it is accurate, since it happened a decade ago, that we can say, we can draw conclusions from it, that that split led to better work-life balance and all this other stuff.
100%.
If we can see the data on that, that would be really wonderful.
He has the survey from his, from the staff, so I'll bring that back. And maybe it's a study session item or community hall or something.
Wonderful. So yeah, those are my thoughts. The specific questions, I think, have been really good, but I'd like to see this in a more holistic context to the city of Corona and dispatch as a department completely. So, thank you, Chief.
So just to clarify, do you have direction to continue working on this?
Right, which I think was the recommendation, right? To direct staff to continue working on the project and then present it to the budget.
Correct.
But I think before it comes before the budget, I would like to see further discussion on the items that were brought up for the council. So it doesn't become, it doesn't come before us as a budget item, but there's more discussion on the, on this change.
Mayor, understood. We'll bring this back for further discussion, but this gives us the direction that council is interested in proceeding down this road, and that's what we're seeking today.
Yeah, that's unanimous. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to our next item on the agenda. We have the topic of optimizing traffic using AI and advanced camera sensors. That's going to be presented by Chris McMasters, CIO, Chief Information Officer, and Aaron Cox, Senior Engineer, Traffic Department. If they'll please present the result.
All right. Can you hear me fine?
Yes, we can hear you all right.
All right.
Testing. Yep.
And we can hear you.
All right. So Aaron's going to drive the presentation, but we are, first of all, I just wanted to say thank you to the Chief, and he's definitely an honorary member of the IT department for his explanation on the cloud. And we're also vying for the longest title of a workshop presentation. So we're going to talk at really high level, so 10,000 feet, and then we're going to narrow it down with my colleague Aaron, talking specifically about traffic. Let's start off. So in the strategic plan, one of the things that came out when we were surveying the public was that traffic was the number-one priority for the city. And this keeps, this has sort of been a constant topic of the city as to what's going on and what the priorities are and where people feel it. And so we've been looking at some innovative ways in which we can address that. So that translated into strategic goal number three, which the council approved. And as you can see there, sound infrastructure. The second bullet point was to modernize traffic cameras and explore utilization of The second bullet point was to modernize traffic cameras and explore utilization of artificial intelligence with those cameras to optimize the traffic flow. So here's kind of what we're asking for. We're asking for an investment in the artificial intelligence-based traffic algorithms and high-definition detection cameras that are compatible with our automated traffic management system plan and also with some of our public safety investments. We also want to invest in a citywide AI-driven traffic data dashboard and invest in synergies that rely on that traffic infrastructure. So we have a lot of traffic cameras currently. We leverage a lot of those cameras also for public safety, and we want to continue to be able to do those types of things. This kind of start, and we've talked about this before in other workshops, is what is AI? And so let me give you the simple definition, right? So AI is the capability of a machine to imitate intelligent human behavior. And I put a little asterisk at the bottom here saying broadly defined, right? Intelligence is the capacity to acquire knowledge and to apply it to achieve an outcome. The action taken is related to the particulars of the situation, whether than done by repetition. And that's one of the primary differences when we talk about programming in that traditional programming is linear and AI is based on probability. So here's kind of the two stacks, right? I made it really hopefully easy to understand. We have the traditional stack on the left-hand side, which is kind of more the A plus B equals C, right? And we hard code that in the IT world, right, to basically create an output. Artificial intelligence is a little bit different, right? So we take in all the data, we process the data, we build models, and from that model, as we enter new data into it, we get predictions. And so the way that I like to describe that is, well, you can look at it a few different ways, right? Personally, you probably have Netflix and things like that. And so when you look at certain movies, right, it suggests movies. And what it's doing is it's taking in all the historical data that it has about you, right, and looking at the choices you're making and then presenting a suggestion of what you might like to watch, right? And that's AI-based. So when we look at presenting data into an AI algorithm, right, we feed it and it learns. And as we feed more and more data into it, it sort of narrows down what those probabilities are and makes suggestions. So data is the key to all these, all of this, really. And one of the wonderful things the city has is a lot of data. When it comes to traffic, we have a lot of traffic data in particular. There's three main sort of characteristics to AI. So one is the learning aspect, and that's really how it's ingesting the data and how we build out those algorithms to help it learn. And then number two would be how it reasons. And so what AI can do is it selects the appropriate algorithm for what it's about to take in. So in this case, right, we might be using visual AI versus maybe a conversational AI, and there's lots of subsets to that of which it can choose to apply to that particular problem. And then the third aspect of AI is self-correction. So as we feed it more and more data, right, it's able to reduce down what those probabilities are until we receive that desired goal. So the more that we feed it, the smarter it gets. So in our case, right, we can take these vast amounts of data and we can make decisions rapidly, and then it can retune that data to make suggestions that are more accurate. So this slide, oh, go back one more slide. There we go. Oh, you're good. So passive versus active, and this is kind of, this is sort of an interesting topic, right? So, and I'm going to use this because it's sort of broad-reaching terms here. But when we talk about passive, normally we're talking about historical data. So for instance, we can take a large volume of data, say in this case, traffic data, and we can apply an AI algorithm to it. And from all of that data, it can come up with suggestions on sort of what to do. Now, when we look at active AI, what active AI is doing is it's taking all of that historical data, and it's also taking real-time data that we're inputting into it and together making that then decision. And so there's a huge difference in that because for what we're going to talk about, we're taking sensor data from, let's say in this case, 500 cameras across the city in real time and also using all the historical data to then sort of manipulate traffic flow. And I'll let Erin get more into that. All right, next slide. And so this is just to say, there's tons of uses for AI, and there's lots of uses the city already uses it for. So things like social listening, lightning grid, hot hole prediction, chat bots, crime prediction. And so you can kind of see how this concept can also fit and apply to traffic, and it's a very sort of innovative way into looking at this and how to solve that particular problem within the city. And saying that, I will turn it over to my colleague Erin, and he will give you a deeper dive.
Thank you very much, Chris. Initially, I'm going to tell you about a couple of different types of traffic control that are in use today. The first one is pre-timed. You see these in downtowns. The lights actuate red and green whether there's a car there or not. They're just on a timer. The next is called actuated, where it's on-demand or what we call free. The first car to get there gets the green light, goes through a timer, goes serves the next guy. The next one is called coordinated, usually by time of day. You see this on major highway corridors. For us, it'd be, think of Foothill, Main Street, Lincoln. These are our major arterials, and they have a PM peak, an AM peak, and usually a midday peak, especially around schools. The best practice is to retime these every one to three years with a big study. Next, you have traffic responsive, which is a series of coordination plans that uses logic to kick into different plans, suffers from the same detriments as coordination. You have to retime it and do a big study every couple of years. And lastly, as Chris was alluding to, you can use AI into traffic with traffic adaptive. This adjusts timing in real time. Today, there's only 5% of the US signals that are actually running adaptive, and today Corona is using actuated and coordinated modes. And I want to tell you guys about our ATMS master plan. What is the city of Corona doing with traffic today? This is our traffic management center, and that's a picture of our ATMS system right now. And currently, we're working on several things. We've just done some traffic management center upgrades. We did a video wall replacement. We're working on consolidating multiple systems into one. We recently hired a really talented engineer from the city of Anaheim with significant TMC operation experience. We have a CIP project to replace CCTV cameras throughout the city. Some of our cameras are 20 years old. We get hit up for public records requests for accidents and things like that, helps public safety out. So we're upgrading to digital cameras, and we integrate these with IT into our leverage system. Another thing we're working on is our ATMS Phase 3 project. The goal of this project is to extend communication to areas that are not served by our traffic management center right now. So Phase 3A brings communication all the way to the 91 at Green River and all the way to the 15 at El Cerrito. Phase 3B brings communication all the way down River Road to the Norco city limits. And Phase 3C is where we're trying to pick up intersections that aren't on major corridors if it's economically able to do so. Some of these are really remote, so we're going to see which intersections we can pick up. Project's currently about 80% funded. Construction's going to begin next year. Traffic engineering is completing 90% review of the plans right now. And lastly, we have another CIP project called the Foothill Corridor Signal Interconnect Improvement. This is diff-funded. It will upgrade our traffic controllers from Surface Club Green River to California and Foothill to the latest traffic controller standards. We're updating some internet or interconnect hardware. We're replacing our current ATMS system with a more advanced system, and I've already mentioned the project limits from Green River and Surface Club to Foothill in California. So the big question, what does this all mean? Why are you guys interested? I love it. Love the enthusiasm. This is me, too. So what this means is we're laying the foundation for future capabilities. And what that means is we're going to have the latest and greatest traffic controllers. They can process way more data than the current stuff. We have a high-speed fiber network. We're going to have a cutting-edge traffic management system. We're going to have a fully interconnected corridor from Green River in the 91 to El Cerrito in the 15. As we all know, that's a giant cut-through through the city. And in the future, there's something called connected vehicle, where vehicles can talk to other vehicles, vehicles can talk to traffic signals. These traffic signal controllers are ready for that, so we're setting ourselves up for the future. And what this means for us is that it enables us, traffic engineering, to leverage artificial intelligence with advanced traffic algorithms and connected vehicle technology. So let's talk about compatible solutions that would help optimize traffic and meet the strategic goal. So there's two types of solutions. There's traffic data dashboards, and there are advanced traffic algorithms. So let's talk about the data dashboards. These are products that have a citywide live and historic traffic data, so we can look back and see, was there an accident? Why was traffic bad? We own that data. It's historic. It tells us congestion levels, incidents, and it's citywide, also covers freeway. It utilizes third-party data, usually from cell phone data aggregators. And on the advanced traffic algorithm side, these are our traffic network-wide, and it allows, as was alluded earlier, AI in the cloud to process all this data. We're using someone else's computer instead of maintaining our own. Traffic timing is evaluated continuously and in real time, and we can make signal recommendations and implement them in real time. And this is high-resolution data. This is what Chris's group would call big data. There's 10 observations a second per intersection, so put all that together, and there's bazillions of lines of data. So let's talk about the solution that we identified for a traffic data dashboard. There's a product called Iteris ClearGuide Arterial Performance Management System. Again, it's citywide. This operates independently of our other systems, uses third-party data, it includes freeway data, and it's web-based. It's really straightforward, really handy tool to have. And for the advanced traffic algorithms, we have a product that we have identified called Sentrak Mobility and Adaptive. It's compatible with the ATMS system we're purchasing under our Foothill CIP. It can be deployed system-wide. As mentioned earlier, it's big data, 10 observations a second. Here's the money. Statistical analysis with AI in the cloud to provide traffic signal timing recommendations. These optimizations can be done in real time and has built-in powerful metrics to tell us how the signals are performing. And additionally, it has an alert feature that can tell staff if there are issues and there's traffic timing or sensor issues that we need to go rectify to get traffic flowing again. So what is required to implement? So for the data dashboard, because it's web-based, there's no capital cost. So it's just a subscription. It's $50,000 a year, minimal remote setup by the vendor, and we can leverage an existing partnership that the city has with Waze. For the adaptive signal control or the advanced traffic algorithms, there's some upfront costs. Every intersection would require a high-def vehicle detection camera system. Some intersections would require some additional detection, usually on really high-speed approaches or things with vertical curvature or horizontal curvature. Think West Hill, West Foothill Parkway. Every intersection would need a new advanced traffic controller, and there is some vendor setup for each intersection, for the algorithm. There's also recurring costs. It has a subscription base because you're using someone else's computer in the cloud to process all this data, so the cost varies by how many intersections you license. And the big question, how do we know it's working? Well, first, it has internal performance metrics. These are some great ones. Arrivals on green, arrivals on red. There's something called a Purdue Coordination Diagram. We can measure vehicle delays. We can measure volumes. We can measure volume-to-capacity ratio. And best of all, we can do before and after comparisons. And we can verify these findings with our data dashboard. We can measure average speed. This can also measure delays. It can produce a heat map. We can measure travel times, and we can, best of all, we can compare to historical data. And now we have context. If there's an accident on the freeway and we see our signal timing suffer, we know why. So what improvements in traffic flow can be realized? Well, there's a couple of case studies out there for this product, and Oahu, Hawaii was pretty fascinating. They had an increase of arrivals on green. That's where you're approaching an intersection and you're detected on green. You don't have to stop. That was increased by 8%. Arrivals on red decreased by 24%. The big one, vehicle delays dropped by almost 50%. Travel time also decreased by 50%. And then you have the ancillary benefit of carbon emissions and fuel consumption going down. A similar project in Queen Creek, Arizona, had very similar results. 18% improvement in delay, 71% arrivals on green. It's a very similar corridor to what I would compare to our Foothill and Green River corridor, which leads me to this, that our Green River Foothill corridor would be an excellent candidate for adaptive. So it's highly variable travel times. Just on the map, you can see that you can't plan. You don't know if it's going to take you 12 minutes or 22 minutes to get across town. It's highly influenced by variations in freeway flow. Huge volume, so if we can make a little improvement, that's a force multiplier for everybody. And again, there's three or four schools along this corridor, so it's highly variable traffic, so this would require real-time timing adjustments. And as Chris alluded to, there are potential synergies. If we're putting up high-definition detection cameras throughout the city at all of our intersections, we can use these to augment public safety. We can monitor pedestrian bicycle traffic. If it's near a park facility or a city facility, we have extra surveillance there. And as mentioned earlier, we can leverage our existing partnership with Waze. So options for your consideration. Option one is the status quo. This is what we're doing today. We're following industry best practices to operate our signals in free and coordinated modes. FHWA, Federal Highway Administration, recommends retiming every three to five years. Internally, we have a goal to try to do our corridors as close to yearly as possible, but it requires a lot of staff time to do timing studies. And currently, we check timing effectiveness with what we call floating car surveys, where we literally get in a car and drive the corridor with a stopwatch or GPS to see how long it take and to see if we made improvements before and after studies. And unfortunately, this is a reactive approach to traffic concerns. We get a phone call, we go out there, or we have to react with a timing study. So the pros of this, there's no capital expenditures, and it follows the best practices. The cons is significant staff time is required to complete these studies. We're very slow to react in changes in traffic. It's a slow process to verify the effectiveness of our changes. And our ATMS Phase 3 funding gap leaves intersections offline, disconnected from our TMC. Option two, deploy an adaptive AI solution on one corridor, Green River and Foothill, El Cerrito, and deploy a citywide data dashboard. So we'd ask council to give us direction to invest in artificial intelligence-based signal control systems. We would deploy 20 HD vehicle detection camera systems. We'd fill the funding gap for ATMS Phase 3. This would deploy an end-to-end corridor from Green River to the 15. And we would measure the effectiveness of these changes with the built-in metrics as well as the data dashboard. And if we like it, we could expand the reach of adaptive, or we can decline to renew the yearly subscription. So the cost for this is roughly about $1.6 million with an $85,000 a year recurring cost for both solutions. The pros is this exceeds industry best practices. We get real-time traffic signal adjustments. We react to traffic as it happens and don't wait years to retime a corridor. Improve travel time, less delays. We fill the funding gap for ATMS Phase 3. That brings connection to 90% of the city. We definitely reduce the staff time to complete timing studies because this would be doing a lot of the data for us. We'd have signal performance metrics, and we'd have travel time available, and we'd have a detailed citywide traffic data dashboard that would help us make better decisions. And we'd have context. We'd have freeway data and historical data. Unfortunately, there's capital cost to this. There's recurring cost. The schedule for a corridor of this size to be deployed, and it would have to ride on top of ATMS Phase 3, would take about a year to implement. And the biggest con is we'd only have AI-based traffic signal control in one area of the city, which leads us to option three. We could deploy adaptive citywide on all of our major corridors with the addition of a citywide traffic data dashboard, so that would be 129 signals under AI control. So all our major corridors are listed there. The cost for this would be $6 million initially upfront and roughly about $250,000 a year. And implementation for a project of this size would probably take three years. Pretty much all the same pros as the last slide. It exceeds best practices, it's citywide improvement in travel time and delays, real-time adjustments to traffic changes as they happen. We fill the ATMS Phase 3 funding gap. We definitely reduce the staff time to complete timing studies citywide, and we have performance data and metrics available to us. And again, the con is there's large capital cost, there's recurring subscriptions, and the schedule would take about three years to implement, and it would take staff time to help implement. So staff's recommendation would be that we implement the citywide traffic data dashboard, and we implement AI-based adaptive signal control citywide on all arterials, but we would roll it out in a phased approach. So here's our summary and recommendations. The good is our status quo. No intersections would be optimized with artificial intelligence or HD video cameras. The capital investment, zero, and there's no yearly fees. We're proceeding as normal. A better option would be option two. Deploy adaptive along the Green River Foothill corridor, fill the ATMS Phase 3 funding gap, and we'd have a citywide data dashboard. 20 intersections would be under AI control and optimized with HD cameras. Capital investment of $1.6 million with yearly recurring fees of $80,000. And staff's recommended and best option, we believe that a citywide deployment of adaptive on all of our arterial corridors with a data dashboard, 129 signals out of roughly 170 in our city would be under AI control, making real-time traffic signal timing adjustments. Capital cost of $6 million with yearly fees of $250,000. I'm sure you have questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cox, and thank you, Mr. McMasters. Let's open the floor to my colleagues for questions. Councilmember Daria.
Thank you. I wanted to go before Wes because he's going to have a million questions.
You also have a million questions, so go on.
I've only got four. Number one, I really feel as if somebody should go to Oahu and study their success. I'd like to volunteer. My first question is, with Waze, even with our existing partnership, doesn't Waze utilize independent users to update? So is there any potential for mismanagement gaming the system because you have unchecked users updating that information and that aggregates to us?
It's just a data source for us, so if we found out that there were issues with that, I can't speak to how Waze actually works. I just know that for free, it would import into this data dashboard as an additional dataset. So they're currently using, there's a service called HEAR, which is, they're buying cellphone data from all of the providers. So that's just location, speed, direction, that kind of stuff. So Waze would just be another layer we can add on top, so we could have independent data, and then we could have our own Waze data, and we could see how they line up. But it's just another dataset for us.
So my next question would be, have we looked into, and I don't know if you're going to be able to answer this, Aaron, or if this may be Mr. Ellis, have we looked into potential grants to help fund some sort of this or some portion of this? And if so, my next question, and I know it's a topic later, would any of those ARP funds be eligible to be used for traffic?
Aaron, you want to take the first one? I'll take the second.
You got it. So yes, we are consistently looking for grants. On our ATMS Phase III project, our consultant actually has a line item in there to chase grants for us. City Traffic Engineer Rosie presented a local road safety plan to Caltrans and got a $150,000 grant that we can use towards some of this. We're chasing HSIP, Highway Safety Improvement Program, grants through Caltrans. So we're consistently on the look for this, and this project probably would qualify for some of those grants.
In addition, part two, spoiler alert. It's coming up later today, but yes, ARP funds are what we've identified as a funding source for this.
I just wanted to add because we'll get asked for direction. I'd like to know, when this comes back, I'd like to know what type of grant money would be available in order, I mean, this is a heavy lift, $6 million for their recommendation. So I'd like to know how much could get offset by grants potentially in the future. And that will conclude my questions.
Just for clarification, are you looking for grants in addition to ARP or including ARP? And again, to just cut to the chase, we're planning to fund this, aside from some of the external grants, 100% through ARP. So there would be nothing but grant-funded funding sources for this.
Yes, but I still want all the grants that are available.
As do I.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Steiner.
Thanks, Aaron, and thanks, Chris. I guess, well, first of all, I think anything we can do to improve traffic flow throughout the city, I'm willing to spend just about anything. But is Caltrans or RCTC using this type of technology? I know there was some talk about integrated corridor management, and then how would, and if they are using that technology, how can we integrate our system into theirs so we can, I'm sure we can get to Green River maybe a little bit quicker or El Cerrito quicker, but if we still can't get on the freeway, it's not really helping us. But if we could, and I know we've talked to Caltrans in the past on trying to work together on timing to flush the queue, and they generally haven't really seemed very receptive to that because of what it would cause to downstream on the line.
And that's still the case. We've had those discussions with them. Unfortunately, instead of following the nation's transportation, traffic controller standards, Caltrans writes their own software. Caltrans does everything in-house. So their product doesn't play with anybody else's very well, and they won't let you swap it out unless you take full liability for their intersection. We've had a couple of those conversations before because we have several corridors that cross off-ramps and on-ramps. And we time around their signals on both ends of the, like, take Main Street. North of Main Street, we time around their off-ramps, and south of Main Street, we time around them. If they make a change and they don't tell us, we don't know. So all of a sudden, our timing looks poor. Magnolia is especially sensitive corridor to that. So this is where, outside of a joint project with Caltrans running, Caltrans software throughout our city, so that they could control it, this is a way for us to time around them in real-time if they make changes or their controllers act funky. Our, that's a technical term, by the way. Our AI-based solution could time around those changes, and we would get a notice of that. So yes, Caltrans has worked on a couple ICM projects, but they have not been receptive with those talks with us.
All right. Thanks again, Aaron, and I do support option three.
Thank you. Vice Mayor? Okay. Councilmember Richards?
Good use of the word funky.
Yeah.
Nicely done there. The, my biggest fear is Corona is a funnel city, so everybody uses Corona as a funnel. So when you reference Queen Creek, Arizona, and Tony's, Hawaii, their results are good, but they're not funnel cities. So the fear is, is you install all this AI software to just find out you're screwed, you're not going to get good results with the AI software. Is that a legitimate fear?
I think the Oahu example is actually a good one. Oahu is kind of a funnel as well because it's a small, little island. It has a couple main corridors. So the improvements we saw in Oahu in the case study are kind of indicative of what we would expect here. Corona is a funnel city, but that's not to say we can't get people from A to B faster and more efficiently than we are today.
So in your opinion, if we install this software, the AI software, we can still become much more efficient even though we are a funnel city, right?
That's correct. I believe I can get you from A to B faster. I might get you to the on-ramp faster, but at that point, it becomes Caltrans' problem. And unfortunately, I can't change how fast they're letting people onto the freeway.
Well, Caltrans is pretty funky.
Yeah. Perfect use.
It's a bad use of the word funky, actually, because it's a different meaning than a
Well, it's not the F-word I wanted to use.
All right, all right. Moving on. Vice Mayor.
I like the word funky. Funky's good. Thank you. Great presentation, and this is everything that we've talked about and more. Very excited. I wanted to ask a couple of, and thank my colleagues have asked great questions. I didn't actually have to cross off like four or five. It's really, really good. Thank you, guys. How are coordination questions going with that? I didn't see El Cerrito on the list, and I know that ATMS III was supposed to connect to
That's my oversight. I lumped that into the Green River Foothill, El Cerrito corridor. So that's included in there. That's actually in our Phase IIIA.
Okay, perfect. Great. I wanted, because that's really a major issue, too. And yeah, you mentioned Caltrans, and I know that they are working on a pilot program with RCTC in Temecula, and that's the Integrated Corridor Management Program. It's a, I think I sent you a copy of it. What they're, that's a company from Australia. They were using some, an actually very similar alignment to what the 91 looks like through Green River. So I think they're just starting that now, and that's working with Caltrans, having given control of their ramps, ramp meters, and they have very, very similar interaction there. So I'm interested to see how that kind of plays out over time. And it looks like this is kind of a different version of that. Would you characterize that as that?
Different algorithm. I'm familiar with the Australian solution. We were more interested in a local support aspect. The solution we chose is local. They're based in Anaheim. I'm sure the Australian company has service here, but from what, all my research on that, that's an older solution, has lots and lots and lots of cost. And I think it would probably be almost double what this is, what we're proposing here. In our current master plan, the system we have now, we have had, for lack of a better word, terrible support, and local support is an issue to us. We have an issue. Traffic's number one. I need somebody out here ASAP, and Anaheim's 20 minutes away. So that was another factor that led us to this. And this is very straightforward. The system is, part of it's web-based. You can do stuff from home. You get a phone call that there's an accident. If I needed to log in and help out relieve traffic, I could do that. Currently, I'd have to drive to City Hall to do that kind of thing.
Okay. And I know for the Integrated Corridor Management, it's kind of counterintuitive in some ways because I think people want to get on the freeway faster. However, in order for the freeway to work, you have to limit access in some ways, and the more, the better the freeway works, the more people aren't going to cut through our city. So there's some nuances there, and making sure that we're working with Caltrans and finding ways to work with them, but at the same time maximizing how we're processing traffic through the city. I know that RCTC, their modelers were having significant issues modeling this new condition with people working at all different times. Are you finding, I mean, would this solution help battle that part? Because it hasn't been a predictable, you know, traffic started at 6 o'clock and it ended at, you know, 7 or 8 o'clock at night, and now they're finding it's, depending on the day, it's lighter. Does this AI system help with that?
Absolutely. So currently, if we wanted to go time, say, Foothill, we'd go do a study, collect data for three days, and we would make a decision for the next one to three years of timing based off those three days of data. With this AI-driven solution, we're taking 10 observations a second at every location. We're identifying patterns, and we're optimizing based off those patterns. So yes, it would, we're collecting, we're doing a timing study every day, every second with this solution.
Perfect. And I want to echo what Councilmember Daria said about grants. Yeah, grants are, yeah, I get that we have, you know, we have this kind of one-time idea of money that's there, but I also want to make sure that we're, you know, one of the other things that the RCTC does well is use other people's money, so I'd like to use as much other people's money, which is important to me. But I also, I want to point out to my colleagues that there, I don't think there's an issue in the city that we're going to get 45% of our residents that would agree is an issue. So I think investing as much as we can to make this work is the best case for us to do because our residents deserve it. Traffic is the most maddening thing of everything that we do. So whatever we can throw at it, the better. I would say five years ago or 10 years ago, you look at our traffic management system, or you go upstairs and you get a tour, and it was definitely state-of-the-art. It was as good as Caltrans', their system, though a lot larger, but it was just as good. People have caught up to us. And so investing in our cameras, investing in this AI, investing in the way that we handle traffic and how we can manipulate it, and I'm very happy to see that we have a new engineer. I can't wait to meet him or her. I'm excited about this. I think that the, you know, pressing forward with this, it would be very, very important to all of us and our residents.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The survey results about the issue, number one issue being traffic, I totally agree, but I, as referenced by some of my colleagues, you know, I think that we think of traffic in the city of Corona as not just street traffic, it's freeway traffic. So I just want to measure expectations that this will get you to the on-ramp faster, but then getting on the freeway is a different deal. So I, too, like my colleagues, am supportive of the recommendation, and I think that this, you know, we still have to have the discussion about the ARP funding later on today, but if it's in agreement and we agree to fund it, I don't think we'll ever get another opportunity to get that amount of money for the initial cost. And then it would be just a reoccurring yearly fee. So thank you, Mr. Cox, and thank you, Mr. McMasters, for the presentation. We really appreciate it. Thanks for all your work with traffic.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to the next item. This next item is for information purposes. We are behind, gentlemen, so let's just be conscious of that. The next one is National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, and we have Mr. Jeff Potts, Environmental Compliance Coordinator, and Mr. Cordell Chavez, Stormwater Inspector, who are going to present the report. Floor's yours.
Good morning, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. We are here to provide you an overview and introduce you to the MPDS program. So on today's agenda, we cover the program overview, regulatory background, program funding, MPDS MS4 permit, the MPDS permit components, new legislation and initiatives, and the purpose is to provide council an update of the MPDS program and the upcoming pending MS4 permit, which is anticipated to be implemented by the State Regional Water Board sometime in 2022. So MPDS is an acronym for the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. This program has a ton of acronyms. MS4 is the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, and we are charged with enforcing, implementing, and administering this program. This program, basically, we are tasked with keeping any pollutant out of the local waterways. Our local waterway is the Temescal Creek. So if there's a vehicle accident, fluids from that vehicle could enter the storm drain and pollute the local creek, which would not be good for us. We conduct inspections of all the construction sites, commercial and industrial businesses here in the town. We submit an annual report to the Regional Water Board with all the data compiled from our annual duties in it. We, I'm stumbling on this one this morning. We participate in a variety of regional task forces. We meet with Riverside County Flood Control monthly as required in the permit. Jacob attends the Management Steering Committee meeting. We attend a TMDL meeting, a land development subcommittee meeting, and we sit with Riverside County DA's office for the Environmental Strike Force meeting. And basically, they conduct investigations countywide, and sometimes they're here in our city, and we don't want to step on their toes. We want to be aware of what they're doing here in our city. We also coordinate with the various city departments, Fire Department, Police Department, Code Enforcement, Land Development, Inspection Divisions, and make sure everybody's on board with implementing this permit. This slide here depicts the difference between a sanitary sewer system, which is a closed-pipe system, which is depicted by the yellow pipeline. Any drain in a building drains out of that building via the sanitary sewer pipe to the city treatment plant, gets treated, then released into the environment to sustain the local wildlife, or we reclaim that water in the reclaimed pipelines. The blue system is the storm drain system, and it collects water from any outdoor drain, be it rainwater, stormwater, and irrigation water. If you're draining a swimming pool, the swimming pool water, and basic nuisance water that flows to the city. That discharges all that water to the local creek, Temescal Wash. Program overview here. We have the Polite Works Director oversees the program, Environmental Compliance Coordinator's myself, Stormwater Inspector Cordell, and we have a Regulatory Technician One who is now assisting us with our program as well. We coordinate again with the Street Maintenance Division, who maintains our storm sewer system. The Land Development Department is ensuring that all the components to treat stormwater are being implemented on the plans that the developers are going to come into town and construct, and then with finance for the general accounting for the program. One too many. There we go. So this slide is going to depict basically how we came up with the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. This is the Cuyahoga River in Ohio, and over a 100-year period, from 1886 to about 1969, this river caught fire 13 times. It received all the runoff and discharge from the local industries, and, you know, somehow caught fire. Maybe someone tossed a cigarette in it. So sometime in the late '60s, the United States said, the federal government said, "We need to study all of our local water bodies and figure out how many of them are polluted." And during that study, they found out that 40% of the nation's water bodies were unusable, lakes, streams, ponds, rivers, creeks. They were unusable for recreation, potable use for consumption, swimming, fishing, et cetera. So in 1972, President Nixon enacted the Federal Clean Water Act along with the EPA, and the federal government said, "How are we going to protect all these waterways? Let's make each state have a Clean Water Act." So each state came up with a Clean Water Act. Then each state said, Then each state said, "Well, how are we going to enforce this? How are we going to make sure people aren't discharging to our local waterways?" So they put it on the shoulders of the counties. The counties, in turn, put it on the shoulders of the cities and all the townships. And so now we are required at the county and city level to obtain permits from each state that you reside in, and hence the MS4 permit and MPDS permit. And this is kind of the hierarchy of what I just went through, from the federal, the state, the county, and the local agency levels. These photos here depict the local Santa Ana River, which we actually eventually discharged to. Our water, we're required to make sure nothing gets into it, no illegal discharges. These photos were taken over by the Green River Golf Course, and it shows how nice and clean the environment is. Uh-oh. Something's happening here. There we go. These photos, the photo on the left, shows a storm drain discharge into the Temescal Wash. That's about a five-foot diameter pipe that collects the local runoff from the city of Corona, discharges it into the Temescal Wash. The photo to the right shows where the Arlington Channel, that collects the water out of Riverside and Home Gardens, converges with Temescal Wash. And you can barely see it, but off to the left, that's the Main Street Channel converging with the Temescal Wash as well. All this water runs down through the Wash, over to the Prado Basin. This photo here, this photo here is an overview of where the Temescal Creek/Wash begins. It starts down at the mouth of Lake Elsinore, flows north along the 15 freeway, takes a curve through Corona, right around Sig Street and the 15, and heads out westerly to the Prado Basin, where the dam is. All the water that flows out of the city and ends up in that creek, converges in the wildlife preserve there, seeps back into the ground, and the Orange County cities pump that water back out of the ground, and that becomes their potable water use for cooking, bathing, and drinking. And once it reaches a certain level behind that dam, it is then discharged through the spillway into the Santa Ana River, and then daylights out into the Pacific Ocean between Huntington and Newport beaches. That's why they always say after a rainstorm, "Don't go swimming, don't go surfing," because all the first flush pollutants end up in the ocean and could cause you to get sick. To handle the second part of our presentation is Cordell Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. Potts. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, City Leadership Team, and Corona's, Corona's community. So we're going to talk about program funding. Let's see here, got to get used to this. So MPDS is obviously a vital function of the city's operation that involve implementation and management of federal, state, and local regulations. The challenge is, a lot of these mandates are unfunded, and so the city has to find ways to fund the program, and, you know, we rely heavily on general fund monies, right? So we have what is called the County Service Area 152, and what that is basically is a $10 benefit assessment unit that's imposed or levied to parcels within the city, and those parcels can be either residential, commercial, industrial. And we have an implementation agreement with the county, given that the county is responsible to collect those taxes. And so we use that money to help fund the MPDS program. And so each year, council approves for us to collect that money from the county, and the last approval was back on February 17th of this year. And that approximate amount was about $783,000. That money is used to maintain storm drains, catch basins, street sweeping, and so forth. And so this is just another illustration of stormwater runoff from different areas, land uses, whether the location is residential, industrial, commercial, streets, freeways. As you can see, that runoff all ends up into a local waterway. Next slide. And here we have permit categories. We have two categories. We have MS4 permit Phase 1, and then we have Phase 2. Well, Corona and Riverside County, Riverside Flood Control District, and 14 other co-permittees are part of the Phase 1 permit. But Phase 2 is obviously for some of the smaller entities, such as the school districts, the hospitals, and so forth. The bottom line is, any person or entity that discharges to waters of the United States has to have a permit, okay? And as far as this next slide focuses on the permit timeline for Phase 1, here in Corona and Riverside County, the first permit was issued back in the early 90s. We're currently working from Permit 4, and that was implemented back in 2010. It expired in 2015, but nonetheless, until a new permit comes out, which is going to be the fifth permit, we have to continue implementing this program. And as Jeff noted earlier, that fifth permit is currently being worked on, and we anticipate it coming sometime calendaring next year. Next slide. So as far, as part of the permit requirements, we have five areas, policies and standards. We have ordinances for us here in Corona. Chapter 13.27 addresses management of stormwater, the stormwater program. We have the Development Code, and we obviously collaborate citywide with departments to ensure we comprehensively are addressing all permit requirements. And then, of course, budget is huge for this program. So as far as some of the things that we do, Jeff alluded to this earlier, you know, as mentioned in the slide, relative to responding to complaints and inspections, we investigate illegal connection, illegal discharges, ICID. We also do inspections of site, construction sites, commercial industrial sites, pool test inspections, municipal facilities. All in all, for fiscal year 2019, 2020, we did approximately 2,000 inspections and investigations. And so these next slides are going to cover some photos. This one shows investigation of an illicit discharge to city right away from a residence that would otherwise end up in a storm drain if not mitigated. So this was mitigated via pressure washing and collecting the discharge for proper disposal. We just don't want to see this in our streets or anywhere in the city, guys. The next photos here are at a construction site. We're trying to identify the best management practices. You can see the photo to the left, the BMPs, you have sandbags and filter fabric, filter fabric that's supposed to cover that catch basin, but it's not ideal. The photo in the middle is better. That's kind of like what we want to see at the construction sites relative to protecting the catch basins, because the sediment, if the sediment gets in there, understand that we have underground pipes that the water travels, and those pipes are eight-inch, 10-inch, 12-inch in diameter. If we get enough of the sediment in there, potentially can clog that and create a problem, and then obviously with street sweeping. And then we have another photo here at a construction site, perimeter BMPs. You know, we have silt fence. You can see the straw wattle inside the silt fence, and you can see the gravel at the outside. Again, this is to contain sediment on site, preventing it from entering the city right away, potentially the storm drain system. We have more photos. This is at a commercial industrial site. You can see the two photos to the left, they have storage issues. We encounter this when we go to these locations. Improper storage and housekeeping can sometimes lead to an illicit discharge, as seen in the photo in the middle. We just don't want that, folks. A better storage is shown on the photo to the right, where they have a containment and it's covered, protected from when it rains. We have more photos here. This is also another construction, I'm sorry, commercial industrial site. We have screen guard to prevent debris, trash from getting into that catch basin. In the photo to the bottom, we have a fiber roll placed at the bottom of the slope, given that the area is not fully vegetated, to help prevent sediment from entering that storm drain. These are all effective best management practices. Moving on. So with everything that we do, we obviously have to account for all of our activities. And so we have database management. Currently, we're using Access Database, but we're working to transition to a paperless system using trackit software. We also do staff training. We collaborate with Riverside County Flood Control and Water Conservation District to do the staff training. And we work, you know, with various departments to ensure training is applied to personnel based on functions, their job functions related to stormwater management activities. Here we have photos of, this was a public outreach and education event. This was an intercoastal watershed cleanup event that was held back in 2018 at the Arbendale Road Crossing of Temescal Wash. This activity is temporarily in hold due to construction of Alcoa Dyke. Also, obviously going through a COVID pandemic has also furthered delay us from coordinating another cleanup, but we're working to bring this back. And from that event, which was held in 2018, we collaborated with mostly students and from the local schools and high schools. We had 122 volunteers, and we removed three tons of trash from that area. That location is where most of our trash is collected, you know, from, is collected, you know, within the city as far as our waterway. This next slide focuses on a regional approach involving three counties, San Bernardino, Riverside, and Orange, administered by Santa Ana Watershed Project Authority, SAPA. And the effort here is to reduce bacteria and nutrients into our local waterway, the Santa Ana River. And so understanding that the Santa Ana River starts at the base of the San Bernardino Mountains, and it travels through three counties, we have to have these regional approaches, and we have to be collective in ensuring that the nutrients and bacteria levels are where they need to be and what's acceptable. So that's what this slide is about. And as mentioned earlier, we have to, next slide, as mentioned earlier, we, we do a comprehensive annual report, progress report of the, of the city's MPDS program that is submitted to Riverside County Flood Control and Water Conservation District. And so because we're part of that permit, there are other 14 co-permittees, so the district submits all permitees' report to the State Water Board, and we recently submitted ours, I think a couple weeks ago. And so the district is now working to get that to the state by November 30th, as noted on there. And what's also important here is to understand that the State Water Board, they can come and audit the city's stormwater program at any given point, and we have to ensure that we are meeting the permit requirements, because if we're not, I mean, we, the city can be fined, right? Not only from the state, but then you have other nongovernmental agencies that can also sue and pursue lawsuits against the city if we're not doing what we're supposed to do. So the last two slides here focus on new legislations and initiatives. So we talked about the MS4, the fifth permit that we're working on right now. This permit is going to be tri-county, regional, as noted here, with Orange, Riverside, and San Bernardino, as opposed to the current permit. The current permit is more for Riverside County, so we anticipate there's going to be a lot more to do, a lot, a lot more requirements, criteria. So that's kind of like what we want to inform council of, you know, to be ready, you know, for when this permit comes out. And, which is a good segue, because to this next slide, the trash provisions. So, you know, the state would like to prohibit the discharge of trash to surface waters, and so the state is going to mandate that cities implement trash capturing devices. We have, you know, two tracks here. Track 1, which is to install, operate, and maintain full capture systems for storm drain to capture runoff from priority land use applied locally. Track 2, install, operate, and maintain any combination of full capture systems, multi-benefit, multi-benefit projects, and treatment control applied not only locally but regionally. So that's, that's kind of like the difference. This can be applied regionally. And here in city, we, we've selected Track 1 to install, operate, and maintain approximately 1,103 full capture systems to the catch basins in priority land use areas. Now, we've mapped out the city, but this, the data was done in 2017, so we anticipate that there are going to be more catch basins that we're going to install these devices to. As you can see, the photo to the right, it's just an illustration of what it's going to be. And the city will have, once this new provision is implemented into the new permit, the city will have a 10-year time span to ensure that we've met the requirement of, of this permit. And as it is right now for fiscal year, the current fiscal year, 2021, 2022, we budgeted $318,000, I'm, I'm sorry, $318,585 to begin installation and maintenance process for the trash capturing devices. So it's coming, folks. Jeff, Jeff, Jeff?
Yep.
Questions?
Next slide.
Yeah, you guys have any questions?
If you have any questions, of course, we'd be more than happy to-
All right, let's see if we have questions. Let's open up the floor to my colleagues. Vice Mayor?
Of course. Sorry, I'm, A, great job, Mr. Chavez, Mr. Potts. This is a very, very complicated issue. I, the company I work for, we do this for large municipalities in, in San Diego County. So I know how complicated it is, and the fact that, that we stay off the radar is an awesome thing. I talked to your colleagues at SAPA, they're very impressed with what we do in Corona. So I want to say thank you for that. But I also, and, and that last slide is very telling, because what comes from the state, you figure TMDLs, the TMDL level, who knows what that's going to be, that tax, the total maximum daily load that can be in the, in our system, is, I'm guessing, is going to go way down. That's, that's just my, my guess from my, my colleagues I talked to. And to think back 10 years ago, the stormwater program really, it was kind of a, well, yeah, everybody has a stormwater program. Caltrans spends, I think, $100 million in this program that they didn't even have as a program of 10 years ago. So the fact that we're this far ahead in kind of positioning ourselves to what that next step is going to be is, is a really good thing. And, but I cautious that, that, that this is going to cost us a lot of money when this comes out, especially with this, this trash provision, because talk about labor-intensive, and I, and another, another one of our example of unfunded mandates from the state, though I think it is a good thing for us to have clean water, it's very, a great thing. But I think that as Mr. Moody pointed out back a while ago about taking, taking out some contaminants out of the soil, it's going to, that last, you know, billionth that we're going to take out is going to cost us more than, than it did for the entire program. So I'm cautiously optimistic, and I want to thank you both for doing such a great job.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Do any of my other colleagues have questions, comments? All right, Mr. Potts, Mr. Chavez, thank you so much for your hard work, for your dedication for your presentation this morning. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. It is 10 o'clock. We would normally take a break, but we're just going to muscle through that and go on to the next item, which is Bulk Trash Collection Program.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Jacqueline Zuccarelli. I'm the Business Manager for the Utilities Department, and this is William Carasco, our Recycling and Program Analyst. And today, we're going to go over various options to enhance our bulk trash program.
Got it. Let's make sure we, oh, there it is. Okay, wonderful.
At the end of the presentation, we will be asking for council's direction on the services you'd like to see added to the current program. Should we continue with our current services? Should we provide bulk trash curbside collection to multifamily residents, have rolloffs dropped off at multifamily properties, host biannual collection events at City Hall, offer residents to self-haul their bulk trash to landfills at no cost, or offer a combination of a few options? For a quick overview, we'll start by providing some information on illegal dumping and how it applies to our city. We'll go over our city's existing bulk trash collection services, and we'll discuss several bulk trash collection options that we believe can help reduce illegal dumping in our city. With that, I'll turn it over to William, who will begin our presentation.
Sounds good.
Good to have you back. Yeah?
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you for that, Jackie, and good morning, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. So like Jackie said, I'm going to go ahead and start off by discussing illegal dumping and how it applies to us here in the city. So first, there was a study that was conducted earlier this year by the Mattress Recycling Council of California that identified that there was four major drivers or reasons for why people illegally dump. The first of those is barriers to proper disposal. This means that our residents believe that there's a lack of convenient curbside collection services, or they also believe that there's collection sites that are not in convenient locations for them. The second is site-specific characteristics. This would be for our areas that are considered to be poorly maintained, or underdeveloped, or just unmonitored for the most part. Socio-demographic factors is also one of those drivers. This would be for our areas that are densely populated or have a high mobility rate, meaning that our residents are consistently moving in and out of these locations. And then attitudes and awareness towards illegal dumping is the last one. This here means that most people understand that illegal dumping is wrong, but they will justify it because they believe that there aren't enough convenient collection options. but they will justify it because they believe that there aren't enough convenient collection options for them. So here in the city of Corona, we did identify that illegal dumping occurs most frequently in these four areas, which is the alleyways within Grand Boulevard, along Ring Con near the Corona Airport, along Border Avenue near Border Lake, and also some in the Palisades Drive area near the railroad tracks. So what most of these areas have in common is that they either consist of multifamily properties, which is apartment complexes, mobile home complexes, or they also consist of empty or underdeveloped areas. And then the reason for why illegal dumping occurs in those two, those two areas is, can be traced back to those four drivers that I mentioned on the previous slide. So currently, our residents do have the ability to call into our Public Works front desk and also submit an online C Clickface to report instances of illegal dumping. So what that does then is it creates a service request within NextGen, which is our, our city's service request and work order system. So after that service request is created, our Streets Maintenance Division will actually go out, collect the items and then take them to a city-operated transfer station to dispose of. So what we did here is we actually pulled three years' worth of data. And this is actually monthly data. And we highlighted the three months in every year where it occurred most frequently, illegal dumping specifically. And so what we identified is that it was occurring pretty prominently in the summer. If you look at 2018 and 2019. And then 2020, there was a significant decrease, which we do attribute to the current pandemic, just because residents weren't moving around as often or they weren't out purchasing large items. And so there wasn't, there wasn't very much of a need for, for disposal of large items. So we also did pull costs from NextGen, from our service requests. So this is three years' worth of data. We calculated a three-year average. So this is actually just the cost for staff time and also for vehicle usage. One thing that I do need to note is that Waste Management does not currently bill us for disposal of the items that go into the roll-off bins at this city-operated transfer station that we have. So again, this is just staff time and vehicle usage. So we're looking at currently under about $40,000 a year. Waste Management also keeps their own records for the service tickets that they create for the illegally dumped items that their drivers or route managers actually find as well. So as you can see, their data is a little bit more scattered. But if you look at all three years, it's pretty consistent in the summer as well, which matches up with, with our data as well.
Let's, let's go ahead and save all of our questions to the end.
Okay.
Yeah?
All right, so now we can go ahead and discuss the existing bulk trash collection options that we offer. So for single-family residents, our Waste Management currently does offer three bulk trash pickups per year, which can consist of up to six items per pickup at no additional cost. Out of those items, five of them throughout the year can be electronic waste, which does include TVs and computers and other things like that. They can schedule pickups beyond those three, but they would come at an additional fee. The rates as of August 1st, sorry, they're a little bit different than what's on the slide. It's $22.01 for the first item and $14.69 for each subsequent item. For commercial and multifamily properties, they can also schedule bulk trash pickups, but for a fee. And those rates as of August 1st are $22.63 for the first and $15.08 for each subsequent item. So currently, we do have about 29,000 items being collected. That is a three-year average of the past three years. And approximately 20,000 customers or unique addresses participating in the event as of the year 2020. So here I went ahead and provided a list of acceptable and unacceptable items for those curbside collections. So as you can see, there's quite a variety. Mattresses is, is one on there, which is one of the most commonly dumped items here in our city. But it also includes other pieces of furniture, exercise equipment. You kind of find this information on our website, also Waste Management's website, which includes other resources, including information on how to properly wrap a mattress. Because that's something that's, that's pretty recent, that change, so. Our city landfill, Elsamar Monte landfill, actually does accept these items at no charge. So they'll accept up to two or less trash bags per day from each resident for free. They'll take up to two CRT devices for free, which are computer monitors or TVs. And they'll also take up to three holiday trees per residential customer per year up through the second week following Christmas. They do also accept up to two mattresses for free per resident per day as well. And then just because mattresses are mentioned so frequently, I just wanted to show exactly what that looks like for them to be wrapped in order for them to be disposed of properly. So they must be sealed. And then the final product is there on the right-hand side, and this information is also on our website. We did feel that it was important to conduct a SWOT analysis on our current options. So our strengths mainly do lie in those three bulk trash pickups that our single-family residents receive at no additional cost. They do receive up to six items for each pickup, which according to our hauler is actually more than what's offered in other jurisdictions. We also believe that there is a wide range of acceptable bulk trash items for curbside pickup. Our weaknesses mainly do lie in those limited options for our multifamily residents. Since there is that high mobility rate that I mentioned at the beginning, there is an increased need for, for disposing of items since they're constantly moving in and out. And so because of that, we believe that it's leading to increased instances of illegal dumping in the city. So as far as opportunities go, we do believe that we have the opportunity to promote our current program and just to make sure that all of our residents are aware of the options that are available for them. And we also do have the opportunity to expand our current bulk trash collection services, which we'll discuss here in detail shortly. As far as threats go, community knowledge of our current collection options, I think, is, is something that's limited. A lot of our residents don't even know that they can schedule those bulky trash pickups. So that's something that we want to work on. And also, another threat is expanding those bulk trash service collections will also lead to increased costs and the need for additional staff.
Go ahead and, yeah, thank you.
So now we can go ahead and take a look at those proposed bulk trash collection options that I mentioned. So what I did here is I went ahead and included, the one highlighted in white is the current option that's being offered that we want to keep. And then the proposed options are highlighted in green. So I'll go ahead and go into detail into each of them, and then we'll discuss costs at the very end. So for our first option, we are proposing that we provide those bulk trash collection services to our multifamily properties. We're suggesting we offer them two, we've, two of up to six items per pickup. We figured that they can use them when they move in, when they move out, or just anytime throughout the year. Marketing for this specific service would be basically what the single-family residents get, which is two flyers per year, just to remind them that they have that option available to them. And just to give you an idea of how many pickups that would be, we have approximately 12,000 multifamily units currently in the city of Corona. Okay, our second option is for us to drop off rolloffs at our multifamily properties. So we can drop off a few, just depending on the size of the property. And that would allow our residents to go in and dump their items into those roll-off bins. Waste Management would provide the property with a list of items that can be accepted. And it does exclude certain items, which I included here on the list. Waste Management would then be responsible for removing the bins and disposing of the items that are within it. And then again, just to give you an idea of how many bins that would be, there's approximately 200 multifamily properties in Corona, which includes those complexes and the multifamily, sorry, the mobile home complexes as well. Marketing again would just be flyers either two to four times per year, just depending on whether we're planning on hosting them biannually or quarterly. Okay, option three is our bi-annual drop-off event that we're proposing. This would be an event that's held during the winter and the summer to avoid confusion with our current household hazardous waste event that's held in the spring and the fall. Illegal dumping is most prominent during the summer, so it would be good to have an event then. And then also in the winter, after the holidays, when residents are purchasing new furniture, appliances, so they need to dispose of their old ones. The county also does waive up to two disposal fees for two community events per jurisdiction. So that's also another reason why they're biannually. They're held on a Saturday from 8:00 to 12:00, which is standard according to Waste Management. And then again, they're the same format as the household hazardous waste event, where they drive into the City Hall parking lot, drop off items, and then exit off of Vicentia. As far as the resources go, I went ahead and listed some Waste Management-provided equipment. They also have to provide personnel to assist with disposing of items and then also to operate the equipment itself. The city would also provide their own staff to verify addresses. So we can do this by requesting copies of those flyers or bill inserts that we send out along with a copy of their ID as well, or their actual ID. We also do need additional staff to assist us with the setup for the event and then also to direct traffic throughout the event as well. Okay, option four, oh, sorry. I'm sorry, marketing, sorry. Marketing for the bi-annual drop-off event, that would consist of sending utility bill inserts to our single-family residents, but since multifamily residents don't receive utility bills typically, we can send them a separate mailer through InfoSend or through one of our other printers. We can also advertise on city LED signs, city newsletters, which would be at no cost. And then we can also utilize some of the bus shelters throughout the city. And then I went ahead and included a mock-up of what that might look like. For option four, we are proposing that we offer the ability for our residents to self haul their items up to the landfill a few times per year. We would have to come up with some form of tracking process that would basically keep track of, of the tonnages that our residents are, are taking up there. Currently, the landfill gate does charge $14.75 for up to half a ton of material. So I'll go ahead and provide a visual of that on the next slide. So we can basically establish a budget just based on the estimated number of drop-offs and tonnages. Marketing for this particular service would basically just be the same as the bi-annual drop-off event with the bill inserts and, and the bus shelter ads and all that. And then half a ton, of course, is, would be like two stainless steel refrigerators or six and two-thirds sofas, which we feel is, is, is reasonable for any resident, especially since they'll be able to go up there a couple of times a year. So data tracking was actually something that was heavily recommended during the last bulk trash discussion. So we just want to provide a quick update. So we are using the NextGen data from those service requests to upload it into our debris dashboard, which is helping us to identify those hotspots throughout the city. One thing that we want to do is to begin tracking illegal dumping that also occurs in our parks so that we can take those into consideration as well and also use that to, to send out educational materials to those areas as well. So those would be mailers, bill inserts, social media ads. And then we can also send out freebies, like free mattress bags that include information. And then they'll basically encourage our residents to use them and to dispose of their, their mattresses properly. And then these are just some examples of what those could, sorry, what those could look like. All right. Another component that we are highly recommending that we incorporate into our marketing materials is to encourage donation of items. So if residents have items that are still in good condition, they can donate them to local nonprofits. We can include those organizations' information on our website, marketing material. One of those does include the Make It Cozy program, which is a program that the city participates in with CityNet. And these are just some of the most common items that they accept. And if you look, mattresses is right up at the top, which again is one of the most commonly done items here in the city. And this is just a flyer of what that would look like. So you can see it includes Make It Cozy and, and some other local organizations. Okay. And then one last thing that I'd like to mention is this quote, actually from the study from Mattress Recycling Council of California. Convenience is one of the most significant predictors of behavior. So basically, if we provide convenient options for all of our residents for the collection of bulk trash, the more likely they are to utilize them. And then hopefully we should seize some reduction in those instances of illegal dumping, even though we understand that we may, I may not eliminate it completely. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it back over to Jackie.
Okay, now we're going to go over costs. Let's begin with the current costs associated with the collection and disposal of illegal dump items in our city. This is just over $40,000 per year, which accounts for staff time and vehicle usage and some marketing collection services offered to all single-family residents. For option number one, we estimate a marketing cost of $10,000. For the collection and disposal costs, we use a price per bulk item calculation. And that estimates 12 items per unit annually. The maximum cost I would see for this program would be $2.4 million, allowing each multifamily residential unit to discard six bulk trash items two times per year. The impact to commercial and multifamily accounts are difficult to calculate since services in this area have varying bin sizes and scheduled services. However, to provide an idea of how this cost would impact the customer class, we estimated that the annual revenue collected from all multifamily accounts to be approximately $2.6 million. And we need an additional $2.4 million for the added services. This is about a 92% increase in revenues needed to cover the cost. For option number two, the total cost for dropping off the rolloffs to multifamily properties ranges from half a million to a million dollars. This includes marketing, which can range from $10,000 to $20,000 based on the frequency of the service. And the cost for the collection was estimated using the cost of two rolloffs to be delivered to each of the 200 multifamily properties. For option number three, the bi-annual drop-off events would cost approximately a maximum of $41,000 per year. This includes $20,000 for marketing, $16,400 for equipment and staff time from Waste Management, and $4,500 for city staff time. We estimate no more than $0.50 increase for residential unit to add this option. And lastly, option number four, the total for the self-haul landfill option ranges from $27,000 to $540,000. And this will cover marketing, which is approximately $15,000 per year. And this is based on the number of particip-, sorry, the disposal cost would be based on the number of participants, which can range anywhere from $12,000 to $540,000 per year based on the number of people hauling to the, to the landfill. For the $12,000 to $18,000 range, we're estimating about 400 residents dropping half a ton two times or three times per year. For the $360,000 to $540,000, we are estimating 12,000 residents hauling about half a ton two times or three times per year. We estimate that the impact would be about a dollar to a dollar fifty per month to all residents for approximate, which would be, would provide services for 12,000 residents hauling half a ton three times per year. As mentioned, for all the proposed options, there will be a rate impact since costs are generally borne by the ratepayer. Depending on the preferences, the total cost will be added to the current rate structure as part of the contract for the solid waste service. Now we're going to review some of the pros and cons for each of the proposed services. Convenience is a key factor, but we may also need to take into consideration the financial impacts to our residents. For the first two options, we feel that the residents are going to be less inclined to legally dump due to the convenience of having the items picked up at their place of residence. For the last two options, we also feel that they may, they may be less inclined to legally dump, however, requires a little bit more effort as the items would have to be driven to the drop-off locations. For the bi-annual event, the, the event will be held at City Hall, which we feel is a centralized, convenient location. And it would be similar to the household hazardous waste events. For the self hauling, the landfill offers the flexibility to get rid of bulk trash at various times throughout the year, which may align better with multifamily residents moving and move-out dates. So for some of the cons, for option number one, it is a high cost. It would have the highest impact to rates. The tracking of bulk trash collections would be quite difficult. And there may be space limitations on properties to place the items. For option number two, some of the cons is also that it could be a little bit costly. There may be high levels of contamination due to the bins not being monitored. And there's also no assistance for the disposal as there's not going to be any staff. And there may be limited space for the- be limited space for the placement of the roll-offs. For option number three, some of the cons would be that the event would be scheduled during the winter and summer, which may not necessarily line up with the resident's schedule, and possibly multifamily residents may be moving in and out at different times of the year. For option number four, the location of the landfill is not very convenient. It's about 13 miles from City Hall, which may be a 20-minute drive, assuming there's no traffic, and residents may not, may lack the proper type of vehicles to haul their items to the landfill. As we know, illegal dumping may not be fully eliminated, and our street maintenance division may need to assist with collection of illegally dumped items throughout the city, but by enhancing our collection program, we hope to make available additional outlets or options for residents. Our recommendation would be to offer the biannual collection events at City Hall, which offers a convenient centralized location for all of our residents to bring a limited number of items, and provides the less amount of impact to their cost. However, we know that biannual events may not line up with everybody's schedule, so offering the landfill self-haul at no-cost option in conjunction with the biannual collection event may offer residents an additional option for disposing items at their convenience. At this time, we'd like to ask for council's direction in selecting from the menu of options the services that we should pursue and including our bulk trash collection program. Should we continue with our current process of having our street maintenance division assist with the cleanup and disposal of illegally dumped items? Should we provide bulk trash corpse site collections to our multifamily residents? Should we drop off roll-offs to multifamily residents? Should we host biannual collection events at City Hall? Should we reimburse residents for taking their items up to the landfill? Or will a combination of a few options work best?
Thank you so much, Ms. Sikaran and Mr. Carrasco. Thank you for your presentation. I have a lot of questions, so I'm going to start this one off. This is a topic that was especially important to me, and I'm glad that we're diving further into it. I appreciate all of the data, the fact that you all have identified that, you know, it's the summer is our peak. You've identified that it's really our multifamily areas where we see the most dumping. That really helps us, you know, make data-informed decisions on our next steps. So I have a couple of questions. We said on one slide that currently multifamily, I think it was slide 11, current city of Corona bulk trash collection, it said that commercial and multifamily customers currently have, currently can schedule bulk trash pickups. My understanding was that that's not the case. Can you please confirm this? So it's the one that says, "Current city of Corona bulk trash collection."
Yes. So they currently are offered the service, but again, it's not at no additional cost. They do have to, they do have to pay a fee for that. It's a little bit difficult for our multifamily residents, because they have to schedule those through their property managers--
Correct.
--who is ultimately responsible for paying the fee.
Correct. Which is not accessible.
Yeah.
I can tell you on my end.
Right.
So, so just to be clear, multifamily customers right now, when we say that the customer is truly the management company--
Right.
So the management company can currently schedule this, and there's a cost to it.
Right.
Now, it depends whether or not the tenant, the renter, can convince their manager--
Right.
--to make this happen. And what I've heard from residents is that does not happen.
Yeah.
So I just want to be really clear that, sure, it's available, but is it actually accessible? It's not.
Right.
And we recognize that it's multifamily customer, multifamily tenants, I want to differentiate, not the customer, not the one that's paying the bill to the trash collector, the tenants that are struggling the most with their bulk trash. So I also want to recognize that, I think it was slide 19, where the proposal is to have two bulk trash collections in this option for multifamilies per year. This would be an option where tenants of multifamily units would be able to call, just like a homeowner, at whatever their schedule is, like, "I need to pick up this Saturday or this next week." This is not coordinated on twice a year. I just want to clarify.
Right, yeah. So they can schedule it pretty much whenever throughout the year. I think typically the way that waste management does it with single-family residents is they schedule it for the next collection day--
Got it.
--whether that be Wednesday, Thursday.
So what this would do is it would align what tenants of multifamily units can access to the same, to the same service that residents of homeowners of single family currently have.
Yes.
It would be an equivalent, this option. Okay.
Just to make sure if I could real quick, you still would have to have the property manager involved in those processes, too.
You would.
Yes, so let me be clear. I've been to communities where it's free like that, where it still has that, because it's still their property, and the tenant would have to coordinate with the property manager and getting that taken care of. So there is a little bit of a nuance there.
That's a big hurdle.
Yes.
That's a really big hurdle. Because I lean towards, you know, you, again, the conclusion that eliminate, you know, convenience is the most significant predictor of behavior. The most convenient thing would be able to have the same access as a single-family resident. But working with management companies, especially if it's a larger place, or it's, it varies. That's a huge hurdle.
It makes it easier if it's free--
Absolutely.
--so that the property manager doesn't pay anything for it, but there is still some coordination. Usually, the tenant has to deal with the property management firm.
All right, that makes it harder. The, oh, two more points. Do we have any insights comparing to our neighboring cities, what their approach is, and what can be more successful? For instance, I know Riverside does, like, on-location drop-offs, I don't know how frequently. Do you all have communication with colleagues in other cities? Can you speak to comparatives on approach? What's more successful? What drives down illegal dumping?
Right. So, yeah, that's actually one of the reasons why we propose the landfill self-hauling option is because the city of Riverside does offer that. I don't think it's monthly, I believe it's on a quarterly basis. So they actually can just go up there, drop off their items, they don't pay anything. It does help. I, like, city of Oceanside has some pretty extensive programs also, where they offer the collection services at, is it multifamily properties? They offer a lot of different donation services alongside their collection services, so it does help with illegal dumping. But again, across the board, I feel like, from what we've heard from other jurisdictions, you'll never eliminate it completely.
Right.
You'll reduce it, but not get rid of it.
A lot of the jurisdictions offer those biannual events, and they're pretty popular.
Biannual at their city--
Correct.
--property.
They select, like, a specific location, it could be schools--
Yeah, schools.
So we're not sending, they're not sending folks out to a landfill, they're saying, "Come, bring it here, and then we take it from here."
Yeah.
Okay. And then on the costs, so slide 34, where we have a cost breakdown, I'm just, I'm curious about a couple of things. So I heard, Jackie, you were talking about the cost per, you know, ratepayer. So option four, I heard you say, if I'm $1 to $1.50 a month, can you give me that equivalent breakdown for the other options?
Yeah. For op, give me a second. For option one and two. Because it only applies to multifamily residences, and they have a myriad of services, like they could have from three-yard bins to six-yard bins, and the frequency can vary from one to six. It's really hard to account for the dollar amount. So what the closest thing that we were able to do was to figure out, like, okay, the current revenue collected for just that sector is $2.6 million, and we need an additional $2.4 million to offer the, to cover the services. And now, the $2.4 is the maximum cost, because, you know, we haven't negotiated anything with the hauler, we haven't talked about how the program's going to run, so we're just kind of giving, like, the worst-case scenario.
Right. Appreciate that.
And that would be like a 90--
92% increase, you said.
92% increase, correct.
But we don't have, like, a dollar equivalent to that. We just can visualize that currently we pay $2.6, and to meet this at the max worst-case scenario, it would cost almost the same. It would cost a doubling of that.
I'm assuming, because 92 is very close to 100%.
Yeah.
You know, your bill probably might double.
And this is absolutely worst-case scenario. This is saying that every single person, every, every, all 12,000 multifamily units are going to use this service, which, right now, we recognize that not every single family unit uses this service, right? So do, do we know how many single fam, how frequently this service is used, so we can kind of estimate a proportionality?
Yes. For single-family residents, it's about 85%, I believe.
85% of single families are using this service every year?
Yes.
Wow, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Goes to show as well how much it's needed in multifamilies. Yes. Okay. And then we said for option, that's the same for option one and two. You're saying it's going to be about a 92% increase for both.
Yeah. For option two, because it's a specific number of roll-offs that we would be doing at a specific frequency, it's a little bit easier. And I believe if we go with the maximum amount calculated, which is about $1 million, and divide that by the 200 properties that this would be delivered to at a frequency of one quarterly, so four times a year, I think it equates to about $433 per month.
Okay. For the player. And then for option three, is the last one that's missing?
Option three, we were saying that it could cost an additional $0.50, worst-case scenario as well, to each residential unit. So that would be for every unit and every single-family resident.
Got it. Okay. That helps a lot, and--
Just to make sure it's clear, that is between those two. Option one and two are multifamily unit properties only--
Only.
And then three and four is all residential units.
Correct.
Yeah, that's right. So you're spreading the cost over a wider base, and so therefore, per customer, from a per customer's perspective, it's a little cheaper for everyone.
And I don't know, and that, you know, raises a question about equity, because, you know, putting the burden on multifamily, even though we know that the dumping is happening more around, there's an assumption that it's also coming from those units, and I would venture to argue that there's probably a lot of, you know, drop-off from outside of those areas happening in those areas. And so I don't know about how equitable that cost to just some players would be. Well, those are my questions. My only other thoughts to contribute to my colleagues as we continue this discussion is to really keep in mind the, the access, right? So having people self-haul to a landfill, to me, seems difficult, especially if you do not have access to a truck or labor to lift those items up. I really do want us to work towards a place where curbside is a true curbside for multifamily and not something that needs to work through management, but it also looks completely fiscally undoable. So I'm, I'm a realist and recognize that option one, while it's the ideal in my heart, is not a thing that we can pursue. I also recognize that a lot of this can probably be solved through education. So what I liked looking and seeing in slide 34 of all of these options was a real investment on marketing and education. So I like that in all of them. What I believe is a happy compromise would be these biannual collection events at City Hall, although I still think that there will be residents that cannot access this. And so I would like to see if there's anything else that we can do, any other partnership, maybe with a nonprofit that, you know, has volunteer hours or young. There's, there's this company, there's a moving company, I want to say, I saw that had, like, used young athletes, like, high school athletes, to help move people, and there was, I think it was a nonprofit. I wonder if there's any public nonprofit partnership that we can offer for someone who can't physically get a refrigerator onto a car that they don't have, a truck that they don't have, to get down here biannually. That would just be the missing link for me. Anyhow, so in that case, I will yield the floor to my colleagues and just say that I am in favor of the compromise, although I really want to get us to the curbside of the two annual events at City Hall in summer and winter, and providing that option to landfill, but I would love for us to stretch a little bit further. Okay. All right. That was enough from me. Opening the floor, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. That was very comprehensive, and I really appreciate it. In my, one of my previous lives, I worked in the recycling industry, and, and I can tell you that, that people, even after a tremendous amount of education, that people still don't know how to separate their, their basic materials. So separating something that you're going to throw away without supervision, putting a roll-off at a multifamily would be a nightmare for sorting. It would cost a fortune in sorting costs, and I just, and you would see God knows what. So I, though I do appreciate the argument that there needs to be, you know, some way for folks to take advantage, I just don't see the practicality, and the cost is definitely an issue. I do like the idea of the biannual. In fact, I like that a lot, the biannual collection events. We used to, and I don't know, maybe either one of you remember or can trace back, when, when my family first moved to Corona, that was one of the, the things that we got in our, our mail was, you could take stuff to the landfill, like, once a year or twice. There was a Corona dump day, and you could go, and so I don't know when that went away, and, and my family used to, you know, use it quite a bit. And I think that was back before they used to do bulk item pickup at your home. So I don't know if that replaced it or what, maybe that's something we could find out. In relation to the cost at the, for the biannual event, is there a way for us to partner with, you know, we have a couple of recycling companies in town, Six Pack, I don't know if they'd be willing to put a container to say, "Hey, look, this stuff comes in, this, this is certainly recyclable, and we can throw it in here, and we actually may get some offset from costs." And then we, we have a rogue group of folks that do computer and electronics recycling at our, you know, random spots throughout the city, which drives me absolutely insane. It would be good to be able to track that, too, to find maybe if there's somebody that would help offset that sort of thing, so we can get that out of the, out of the landfill as well. And I don't know how that would track with, with waste management's, you know, tactics and what they do to separate things. And lastly, I want to thank Waste Management for doing the bulk, the bulk pickups for us. That's a substantial expense. If it's costing us, you know, what was it, $16,000 a year to do that, it's probably, it's going to cost them at least five times that. I mean, just to drop off a roll-off and pick it up, and the dumping fees, there's a significant amount. So that's, I want to express my thanks for, for them for doing that, but I want to reiterate that I support the biannual collection as long as we can find a way to maybe offset some of that cost by having somebody come in to take those items that could easily be recycled.
Okay.
And you had noted, thank you, Vice Mayor, is the biannual, biannual, is that something that we can, the cost is covered? There was mention, right, that you get Waste Management lots up to two community events? Was that right?
That's for the, the cost for disposal at the landfill, so the county actually--
Oh, got it. Okay. Okay. So it's not the same thing. Thank you. Okay. Who's up next? Councilmember Daria.
Thank you. The problem with the biannual drop-off event, in my opinion, is that if you can biannually drop it off at City Hall, you could biannually take it up to the dump and drop it. You're loading it up, whether you go to City Hall or whether you go down to the dump is negligible, really. So I'm, I'm kind of against it, simply because if you're already loading it up, take it to the dump. I would rather, I would rather look into investing into opening up days at the dump in order to do that for the city. The other thing, too, is I'd written down, and Mayor, you beat me to the punch about, about multifamily having the ability to do that, and finding out that there's some sort of challenge with coordinating with the management team. I'm wondering, have we looked at ways to communicate with the management teams? I mean, it seems to me like if they were charging $50 as part of their buy, as part of their upfront move-in costs for a dump at the end, that it would probably take care of, it would actually probably be a moneymaker for them, because then the management company, when somebody moves out, would just say, "Whatever you don't want, just put it down there by the dumpster, and we'll take care of it." Right? So the education and really partnering with the management companies and saying, "Look," and maybe there's another option about partnering with them and saying, "Look, you know, if you're charging these costs upfront, and instead of, you know, your tenants just, you know, dumping it, you know, they go out the gate and they dump it on the side of the road or whatever they're doing, encourage them to leave it there, because you've already paid for the dump." So I don't know how we could work with our management companies moving forward, or even currently, and just saying, "Look, you know, charge it for your upfront costs. It's, you know, a $50 basic fee. I realize it was like $20, $21 for the first item, and then there was an additional cost, but, you know-- was an additional cost, but, you know, most people are taking the majority of their stuff with them. They may leave a couch, they may leave a sofa or something along those lines. But I would be willing to bet you that that would be a better option, is to get them to do some of the upfront work. That way, when their residents move out, they can simply make that call because they've already, we're making it easier for them, right? They've already collected a fee for it. So I think part of the marketing strategy could be to really educate them and partner with them and encourage them to really, because they're the bottleneck, so let's encourage them to remove the bottleneck themselves. I don't know how that looks or what that option looks like, but that seems to me like that's the most efficient usage. Because I personally have used the bulk pickup. It's weird, the last time I did it, I scheduled the bulk pickup, somebody came before and they picked up my old barbecue because they wanted this scrap metal, then I had to call and cancel the bulk pickup. So, because I didn't want to get charged, one of my free times for a bulk pickup, that didn't happen because somebody already took it. I'm not counting on somebody coming around and collecting recyclable material. But that just seems to be a byproduct of what happens here in Corona. So if it's some sort of metal product, it usually gets picked up before your scheduled bulk item will get picked up. So I'd like to see how we could partner with our current management companies to encourage them to kind of do some of this already, if they're the bottleneck. Thank you.
Thank you. Other colleagues? Councilmember Richards?
My vote is to leave it the way it is now. I've noticed, I lived in apartment complexes, and when you watch people move out, they just put all their crap next to the dumpster and then the complex handles it. They don't wait for the city to have a roll-off date. So it's the, whatever the apartment or condo management, they just know that that's the cost of doing business for them. So to spend forty thousand on a biannual roll-off, it's, I don't even think many people would show up and I don't think you'd get forty thousand dollars' worth of it. So I would just leave it the way it is now. Thank you.
Councilmember Steiner?
Yes, thank you. I think the biggest issue really is promoting it. And, you know, there's, there are plenty of ways to get rid of your bulk items now for free, but I don't think people really know that. I would be supportive, though, of doing a pilot program, two times a year, having the roll-offs at City Hall and just see what happens. And after we do a big marketing campaign, and then reevaluate next year to see, was there a change and how much stuff was getting dumped on our streets? And just try it for a year, see what happens. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Councilmember. Did you want to...
I want to change my opinion.
That's why we discuss these things?
I'm on Steiner's team for this one now.
Okay. For this one, that's the caveat. Okay. So there seems to be, there's a differing of opinions, but there seems to be at least a majority consensus. And I heard some confirmations by Vice Mayor to treat this as more of a pilot program. But the intention would be to really have a full-fledged marketing effort to educate the community on how to get this done and what their options are. And to try out what biannual bulk cleanups at City Hall would look like and how that can impact our overall data around the city, see if, you know, I know our years are kind of awkward now with the pandemic, but see how this drives the illegal dumping and see if there's any change there. And I'm okay with compromise. Thank you both very much. I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. What time is it? It's almost eleven. Okay. Let's get through the next item, which is a community tree planting volunteer program. This is an informational presentation by, sorry, I should have changed the page, by Dr. Turner, our Community Services Director, and Mr. Cortez, our Park Superintendent and Tree Warden, who are going to present this item. Thank you for yours.
All right. Good morning, everyone. We know that we stand between you and the break, so we are going to be fast, fun, fabulous. So first of all, let me thank you so much for approving the Urban Forest Management Plan. This is a key component of that. And also, thank you so much for approving a volunteer coordinator for Community Services. I think you'll see both of those items really being illustrated for you and how they work together in this presentation. So let me go right ahead. We're just giving this to you for your information. What you'll see is that trees and, trees and open space are a huge conversation all over the nation now. They're on the front cover of many magazines. Trees change the way people live. They change the air you breathe. They change the way you feel about walking down the street. They're incredibly important. And we thought in this program that we would coordinate both the need for trees in Corona and the massive replanting that we need to do, and capturing the energy of the citizens of Corona who always want to volunteer. We think this is a great opportunity for them to be involved in the solution. So what does that mean? We want to bring to you a community tree planting volunteer program where people are trained, they're empowered, and they really do feel like they're contributing to their community by volunteering and changing the way Corona looks. There's nothing more exciting. We did a tree planting event with some kids and they came back to the park and they're like, that's the tree I planted, you know? And you can come back years later and say, that's the tree I planted, you know? And me and the neighbor across the street, we planted that tree and that tree is still here providing shade and beauty for the residents of Corona. So I'm going to turn it over to Moses for an overview of the program.
They mic'd me up. Can you guys hear me? All right. Well, thank you, thank you guys for allowing me to be here. So yeah, as Ann mentioned, so the city will be utilizing grid formatting, similar to how we laid out our grid tree trimming maps. This will help us map out our volunteer tree planting days and will account for approximately two percent of the reforesting effort. We anticipate having this, our tree planting dates locked in by the end of the year. And as soon as we have those dates, we'll be sure to share them with you. Next slide. In addition, our volunteers will receive a volunteer orientation, as Ann mentioned, by our new volunteer program coordinator. They will also assist with the distribution of our residential tree care kits and ensure the trees are successful after they are planted. In addition, this program will help the city with deferred contractual costs for every tree planted through this program. And the reward of this program will be us hosting our next Arbor Day, which did take a pause after 2019 due to COVID restrictions. This past July, we did complete our first volunteer tree planting day where it was extremely hot.
Extremely hot.
And we planted thirty twenty-four-inch box trees throughout the park. This particular event was supported by over eighty-plus volunteers. It was amazing, an amazing success. The kids had a great time and the community was out watching us. We had some people come up to us and asking what we're doing. Once we explained it to them, they were like super on board and just happy to see us out there putting trees in the park. Going forward, we'll coordinate these events three times per year, October to April, again to avoid that extreme summer heat. And this program will be managed by the program coordinator and the parks, trails and parks and trail superintendent. And the advertisement for this program will be run through the coordinator on the city's social media platforms and through our volunteer interest database that we've been collecting. In regards to outreach and education, we'll be providing our residents with the proper tools to ensure that the tree is successful. These items include materials such as FAQs, flyers, deep-root watering gator bags where irrigation isn't present. And in addition, we'll be publishing and distributing information for all the proper planting techniques, proper tree selection, and our Ask an Arborist series that'll be coming soon. These items will be pushed out through quarterly social media posts, mailers, and on the city's Urban Forest webpage. And lastly, for my slide here, we have an example of the kind of little flyer that they'll receive, both our residents and our volunteers. And this will kind of go over the basic functions of how to plant a tree correctly and what to expect. And we also have a picture of a gator bag, and this is where we don't have irrigation present. This will release water slowly over the course of about eight hours, and then you can refill it and that'll get that deep-root watering. And I'm going to go and turn over the last few slides to Ann.
Okay. So we can always do things better together. So it's not just that we're engaging our residents, but we also want to engage our community partners, our nonprofit communities such as the YMCA and the United Way. We want to do mulch giveaways. Part of the engagement with volunteers is the ability both to give them something and to allow them to give something to the community. So they're planting the tree, but they're also, when we're doing street tree plantings, having the opportunity to give their neighbor a tree care kit, right? So if their tree is in the easement and there's not a bubbler there or there's not something there, they can give them that gator bag. They can give them those instructions. And there's nothing better than sort of peer-to-peer engagement, right? So, hi, I'm your neighbor. We just planted a tree in front of your house. I did it, you know? How can I help you take care of it? That's a great engagement. It's so much better than me coming to the door and saying, hi, we just planted a tree. Do you have any questions? That doesn't go well. So this is a great way for residents to engage with each other. And it creates community among our residents in that they feel they're together in this tree, tree planting. We're going to have a Tree Day with West Coast Arborists. And the Ask the Arborist series, I just have to touch on that because I'm super excited about that. We have this really famous arborist who is going to be doing several different little short videos for us. We'll do it Facebook Live, but then we'll also have it on our website. And you can search through that. So if you have a particular question about a tree or what your tree is doing, this arborist is an expert throughout Calif, excuse me, California and the nation. And they'll be talking about answers to all of those kinds of questions. And you can actually send in questions to us via email and we can answer them on Ask an Arborist. So very exciting. Finally, we will have some supplies for folks. We'll give them T-shirts. Who doesn't love a good T-shirt? So they'll get their volunteer T-shirts that they can wear during the event and they can have afterwards. We'll be giving out gator bags. We'll be doing the educational materials. Then we'll do some door hangers. We're also going to use those volunteers to canvas some of those neighborhoods. So before we do a planting, folks are going to know that a tree is coming their way, what to expect and what we expect from them. And then also in the parks, we'll be letting the neighbors around the park know that we'll be doing tree plantings when we do tree plantings in parks. And this is currently funded in our Urban Forest Management Plan operating budget. So I wanted to just share this with you. We're all responsible together for a greener, healthier, more active Corona. When the city works with resident volunteers, the program becomes the community's program, not the city's program. And we make change in our community together. If you have any questions, please let us know.
Thank you, Dr. Turner. Do my colleagues have questions, comments? Dr. Turner, this is the good stuff. I'm really looking forward to this program. Thanks so much for all of your work. We appreciate you.
I'm super excited about mulch madness.
Yes, there we go. Thank you both. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. That concludes the end of this section, which was our City Services section. Let's see if we have any comments from the public. Do we have any speakers for the City Services items? If so, please approach the podium. No speakers? Okay. Mr. Ellis, it is eleven and I wonder what you, what we should do about this next section. It's supposed to take quite a bit of time. What do you suggest?
Mayor, we are ready to press forward. If you want to take a five-minute break, we can do that. But we are ready to go, maybe if everybody takes just a quick five-minute rather than a ten-minute break. And we will attempt to expedite the next presentation. We will play catch-up. And we can break for lunch after that.
Okay. All right. Let's do that. Five minutes, and we mean five minutes. I'm going to set a timer. I'm going to set a timer.
And let's see, kind of going through this pretty quickly. In terms of community services, we want to make sure that we're supporting efforts for libraries and parks and trails. And then kind of a little bit more specific, if there are opportunities for funding for the municipal airport, we are, now that we have Jake on board, we can actually probably start looking at that a little bit closer. And then, like I said, you guys have a very thorough platform, but as you go through this, there's always things that, you know, can come up, or we start looking at something that we maybe want to position on, and we realize it's not identified in here. So we do have the next couple of months to really work that out. But if there's anything that you think is missing, I'm happy to get your input on that.
And just to be clear, this is, none of this is new. This is what the council voted on as our legislative platform. So it's just a, not even a rephrasing of it, but it's just broken up into sections. Thank you.
Yeah. And also, I just mentioned, like, we try to keep the platform, we want it to be a living document, so we do want you to take a look at it every year, so that it's continuously reflecting the priorities and goals of the council, as well as identifying what we're seeing come out of Sacramento, so that you're fully prepared to take a position on those items.
Mr. Ellis, when is it that we go over that as a council?
Mayor, as of this year, this is the first meeting where we then kick that off to have that conversation. And then we will also bring it back, I believe it's to the November study session, to kind of try to finalize that off. We want to get that adopted, hopefully before the end of the new year. We're going to talk about the schedule here, I think it's in the presentation as well. But this is that first review of the last year, and then to gauge your interest on other topics. It's intended to be iterative, because there's usually a few versions of this we need to go through to make sure we've captured everything, but this is that first opportunity.
But the legislative platform this last time, right, they came on board in February. When did we vote on the legislative platform as a council? Do you remember that?
No.
I would guess, like, end of March, beginning of April.
It was right after you came on board, right? Okay.
And one of the challenges with that is that we had already sort of crossed the threshold with some of our legislative delegations to be able to meet with them, and so that's why we're trying to push this, to back this up a little bit, so we have plenty of time to go through it, so that we're well-prepared for those conversations.
Okay, thank you.
So earlier this year, we presented to the council, we did a study session on the regional housing needs assessment, which has been a huge topic of debate and discussion in Sacramento. And what we were able to really gauge out of it was, or what our purpose was for that, was to determine where the city was on housing, how we're going to turn that into our messaging as we move forward. And we were able to really, you know, by working with your staff, by talking with all of you, that you guys have done a really great job on housing. And it's not that you're not doing your part, it's the fact that there was an 800% increase between the fifth and sixth cycles. And that the hard part, and we see it with a lot of cities, is that the hard part in meeting RENA numbers isn't the market rate housing, it's the low and moderate rate housing, and that there's a really, there's a lack of subsidies provided by the state government, by the federal government, and with the elimination of redevelopment, it doesn't, it really took away a lot of the tools you have. Yet still, you guys have been really creative, in that we took what we got out of those meetings to have a meeting with Senator Roth, we met with Assemblymember Cervantes, and we created a core messaging document that outlines everything that you're doing right. And I think, you know, it goes to building a relationship with your local delegation, and it helps them with the information that they need to, if not support your efforts. Just taking this year into example, like, if they can't oppose certain bills that you would like them to oppose, they can be supportive in other ways. And I believe, you know, the city actually got a budget earmark for affordable housing developments, if that's correct, through Assemblymember Cervantes. So, but really, we need to give them the tools that they need in order to be your advocates up in Sacramento. So going over our key performance indicators, we look at wanting to make sure that you, it makes you feel like you have your boots on the ground, that you know exactly what's going on up there. And we do that, and we want to make people up there to know about Corona's presence in regards to the policies that you guys are all supporting. So while you guys took a position on 11 bills, that doesn't include all the bills that we were monitoring and actively watching. And then we would be present in each local government committee, each housing committee, utilities, energy, PERS, and budget, and as need be, and the other committees that some bills would come up on. And also making sure that there is an analysis of legislation, and you understand how it affects the city, and what the bills actually say. And we saw the need for that this year more than ever, because what we were seeing being testified on or presented in committee by members wasn't what was actually matching the bill language. So regardless of how you felt about a bill, we would provide analysis on exactly what the bill does. And it did actually end up clarifying a lot of questions and leading to amendments. Let's see, so yeah, we'd have, every committee got a position letter, as well as the governor's office, and then every time a bill was heard in a committee, your delegation, as well as key members who sit on those committees, would know what was happening. Regarding, we kind of talked about the platform already, but really, again, we just want to make sure that your platform is not just a reflection of your priorities, but also has Sacramento's priorities incorporated into it. And then annual reporting, we provide the city with a monthly activity report, it really provides detailed daily activity of what we're doing in terms of emails, who are reaching out to, what relationships are being built, and what's happening with various bills. And then at the end of this year, you'll get a year-end report that really gives you a huge totality look about the total number of bills that were tracked, what we engaged on, we'll have a better sense of the wins and the losses by then. And then client communication, this year, we also had a huge need for making sure we had someone monitoring the daily press conferences that were happening, on the state's response to COVID, how these immediate budget action items were working, because we'd hear about it, and then immediately, like, money was supposed to go out, and no one, you know, it was trying to digest all this information and make sense of how and who would be eligible. And there were a lot of executive orders, too, not just regarding COVID, but eviction moratoriums, wildfire and drought conditions, and making sure that you guys had all the information you needed for each of those. And then we did hold virtual meetings between the council and the city's legislative leaders earlier this year, which next year I'm hoping to do a lot more of. And then our next section is our legislative session and review. So a few bills regarding local flexibility is SB 619 by Senator Laird, having to do with organic waste. SB 1383 was signed, went into law in 2016, and the whole goal of that bill was to reduce methane emissions. There are regulations that are supposed to go into effect January 1st of 2022. Because of the impacts of COVID and what it's done to local budgets, there was a push to delay the implementation date. All the parties came together, and if a city wants to submit a notice to comply to CalRecycle, they will not be penalized. And then CalRecycle also said that it would be three years before they actually extended notices of violations to anyone, given what the pandemic, so that people can deal with the aftermaths of the pandemic. SB 640 allows for jointly funded projects using your SB 1 Local Streets and Roads dollars. This was a bill we actually worked on with one of our other clients, and it wasn't clear in law whether or not you could actually do this, it was kind of up for debate, so we just made sure that it's codified, and if you've got some cities that you want, and you have a thoroughfare that goes through multiple jurisdictions, you guys can pull your streets and roads apportements from SB 1 to complete and bid on a project. So broadband was a huge topic this year. The pandemic really did highlight the lack of access. And when we dealt with broadband before, it was about local governments and the broadband companies, and that was it. This year, the education groups came into the dialogue, and it really changed it. You know, there was this viral picture of two kids in a Taco Bell parking lot trying to get Wi-Fi so they could do school, and that really dictated the whole conversation we had on increasing broadband. So in addition to opportunities for, there was $156 billion in the budget for broadband expansion, those grants are going to start rolling out early next year, but there were other bills in order to streamline those efforts. So AB 537 by Assemblymember Quirk would require a city or local agency to approve or deny a permit within a certain period of time, so you can't just leave an application hanging, and depending on the size of the project is what dictates the period of time that you're allotted to comply or to get back to them. SB 378 by Senator Gonzalez would allow for fiber installers to use micro trenching as a form of installation, unless they can make a determination that the, that micro trenching would adversely impact public health and safety. And I will say, like, this one, a lot of people didn't take positions on this one, but it's one of those that you don't really know how it's going to affect you until you start getting in there and seeing what your infrastructure looks like underground. So there could be some potential, there could be some potential hurdles if this bill were to get signed. And then SB 556, which the city did take and oppose position on, would require local agencies to allow for the placement of small wireless facilities on your streetlights and traffic signal poles. And all three of those bills are currently on the governor's desk, awaiting his action. So yesterday, the governor signed 27 new housing bills. So some of these that I have, I'll have updated statuses on. AB 215 by Assemblymember Chu, this bill adds a 40-day review period when you're doing your housing element. I believe you guys just finished your sixth cycle, so this wouldn't apply to you till the next round. And then it also allows HCD to request that the attorney general brings suit against a city who fails to comply with current, current housing laws, or have that implemented into their element, and if the AG refuses, it would allow HCD to obtain outside counsel. AB 687 by Assemblymember Sayarto creates the Western Riverside County Finance Trust, and that was signed earlier this year in July. And then AB 989, I wanted to just mention to you, it was, didn't get to the governor's desk, but there is a potential that we see this back in January. It being a two-year bill, if it gets to the governor's desk by the end of January, he still can sign it. So this would create an Office of Housing Appeals within the Department of Housing and Community Development, which would create a dangerous precedence of allowing a state agency to dictate something that really should go under judicial review. AB 1029 by Assemblymember Mullen, that bill was also signed yesterday, and it would add for the preservation of affordable housing to be counted as a pro-housing jurisdiction. What that means is that that would give them an extra point when they go out for grants for affordable housing projects. AB 1401, that was also a two-year bill, the city had an opposed position on that one, and this is the bill that would have restricted imposing or enforcing a minimum parking requirement on developments that are near public transit. SB 6 was, I think, one of the first bills that we engaged with the city on, allowing housing to be built on a parcel that's zoned for office or retail use space. This bill is in the assembly, did not get down to the governor's desk, but again, it's one of those that we can see move forward in January. SB 8 by Senator Skinner extends the sunset of the Housing Crisis Act that was passed in 2019, and it limited local discretion and timelines associated with considering development applications. It was supposed to sunset in 2025. This bill added an additional five years to 2030, and also includes, expanded the definition to include the construction of single dwelling units. SB 9, this bill was signed by the governor earlier this month, allowing for two units to be built in a single-family zone, or for the subdivision of a parcel zone for residential use into two parcels. This was one of the meetings that we had, or this is one of the bills that we talked about when we met with our legislators, about the good things that Corona's been doing in regards to housing, and the concerns, the concerns with, you know, this bill not really allowing for affordable housing, just lot splits. SB 10 by Senator Weiner has to, would allow a local government to pass an ordinance to zone for a parcel up to 10 units if it's near a transit-rich or jobs-rich area, and it would waive CEQA for such developments. That bill was also signed earlier this year. Couple of the public safety bills that we, that are currently sitting on the governor's desk are AB 89, this would increase the minimum qualifying age from 18 to 21 to be a peace officer, and then would also create an educational program with the California Community Colleges system on a modern policing degree. SB 2 by Senator Bradford is a reintroduction of a bill that was presented last year, and it would grant the commission of peace officer standards, also known as POST, to determine if a peace officer is fit to be a peace officer, or if they should be decertified. And then SB 16 is an expansion of a bill that was passed a few years ago, and expands the categories of personnel records that are subject to disclosure under the California Public Records Act. SB 278 was signed earlier this week, it has to do with disallowed compensation, and if, under current law, retirement benefits that are bargained for, if a portion of it's disallowed, it falls on the retired employee to ultimately pay back the overpaid amount. This bill would have an actuary and determine like 20% of the difference between the monthly allowance and the disallowed compensation, and then it would be the employing agency who pays that to CalPERS. 90% of that penalty would go to the retiree, and then 10% would remain with CalPERS. And then AB 361 by Assemblymember Rivas, this is a bill that makes modifications to the Brown Act. Under a state emergency, you would be able to continue to hold your meetings remotely. Towards the end of session, there were some late amendments taken in order to include state agencies. So state agencies have to continue to abide by these modifications until January 1st, 2022, and local agencies have till January 1st, 2024, as long as we are under a state of emergency. And then the last two weeks of session, we had two attempts made to pass some sort of legislation in regards to vaccine requirements. One of them would have been requiring people be vaccinated, or having to do regular proof of testing, and another one was more benefiting the employers, so that if an employer wanted to have those requirements, they wouldn't be subject to a lawsuit. Both of those bills failed, but I do anticipate seeing something in those regards as we move into next year. And then wanting to give you just a quick look ahead, so mentioned October 10th is the last day for the governor to sign our veto legislation on his desk. The legislature, they'll reconvene on January 30th, and then the next two kind of dates are a little fluid until we get an approved legislative calendar, but sometime between that last week or first, last week of January, first week of February, is when all two-year bills must be acted on, and then anticipating February 18th for the last day for new bills to be introduced. So once we come back in January, things are going to move pretty quickly. And then, kind of what we were, Mayor, what you had attested to about the platform, and when we would adopt it, we're looking to get everybody's feedback, have a formally adopted platform by December. So again, when the legislature reconvenes in January, we are ready with our 2022 legislative platform. And we're expecting next year to be more, to be more normal than it's been. You know, I thought after last year, it wouldn't, it couldn't have gotten any weirder, and then it did. But, but you know, in terms of our timeline, do anticipate everything remaining pretty much by the book. So we will have, February is being the last day that we go ahead and introduce legislation. April is usually when we look to have legislative action days. If you participate in the league, we like to maybe piggyback a date off of that trip, and do city-specific meetings if there's an interest. June will be when we do budget, and then end of August will really be, because it'll be the end of a two-year session, we'll be looking to end the legislative session end of August or beginning of September. And then have, again, till the beginning of October to, to act on all legislation that will have been passed next year, and then we get to do it all over again. So going into our legislative outlook, next year's going to be an election year, so it really changes up what politics look like. You have people running for different offices, all of a sudden, where they are on certain things, that changes as a result of what they're running for. The governor will be up for reelection, so we'll also see a lot of big statement bills. They're not going to go anywhere, but they're going to make great press releases for a little while. We're going to continue to focus on economic recovery, and housing legislation's going to continue to be a priority for the legislature and for the administration. One of the interesting conversations that we'll probably have next year is in regards to the state budget. With our huge surplus, we are able to divvy up a lot of money into a lot of different pots, and it really was an unprecedented budget. So next year's going to result in cutting down and really focusing on what are those priority areas that we want to, where we feel like state money should be spent. Because of the pandemic, we've been able to have this conversation about Brown Act modifications, the AB 361 that has a sunset on it, but I don't think that's the last we've heard on what possible modifications could be made to the Brown Act in order to increase public participation. I already spoke about the COVID-19 vaccinations, and then redistricting. The redistricting commission was just granted an extension through the end of the year to get their maps finalized. They were supposed to get it done, I believe, earlier in December. They wanted a longer extension than they got, but they said, in order to not jeopardize the June primary elections, that they needed to get those done by the end of this year. So that'll also be, kind of tie into the election and see what we, see how that all falls. Some of the things that we're looking to do is kind of working with staff right now to see if there's an opportunity to do some sponsored legislation in regards to Live Work Corona. We met with your staff to learn more about it, going to have a follow-up meeting to really kind of hone in on what opportunities might be out there, understanding the state's priorities in regards to cap and trade, kind of thinking that there's a nexus, but we really need to develop that a little bit more. And then I spoke about legislative action days, it's a great opportunity for, for you guys to meet with your lawmakers, key policy staff, not just your lawmakers, but those who might be the ones really spearheading some of the efforts that the city is supportive of, as well as state agencies we are happy to engage with. And then really an opportunity to work on some regional collaborations, given how big transportation, given what a big priority it is for the city to be working with the COGS, with neighboring cities, to see if we can come together collaboratively to either go after grants, or achieve money through the budget, and also look at federal opportunities. And that is all.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez, and I can't thank you enough for all of your efforts. It's, it's been a game changer for us to be active this year in state legislation, to be at the table. I mean, you shared earlier about, you know, it's relationship building, and, you know, holding, you know, being able to have a Corona perspective on this legislation that's impacting us, but also holding our, our team accountable, and finding ways where if support can't be had in one way, maybe it can be had in another, and we just saw a clear example of that with the earmark. I don't have questions, I'm looking forward to the process. I'm looking forward to us getting to a point where we really like go to the next level, and actually get these legislators to sponsor legislation proactively with us. I think, I think we're, in the next cycle, we'd be able to get that. So let's open the floor and see where my colleagues are at with questions, comments. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Wow, yeah, this was a walk down memory lane. I had ups and downs, I was excited, I got depressed, you know, but I'm back, I'm looking hopeful that we can find ways.
We were right there with you.
Especially, especially toward the sponsoring legislation part. I think it's, it's really important for us, and if we could find some, some easy wins for legislators, I think I have a couple of ideas on transportation that I think that, shouldn't have any problem getting support, at least I would assume so. But also, I wanted to thank the mayor, because of her, she had great relationships with our state legislators, that were able to get on the phone, and, and I'm, hopefully it's not the last time that we all get to speak together, but I thought that her and I made a good team, kind of tag teaming, I don't know if I'm the bad guy or the good guy.
No, 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 we were both good people.
Yeah, we were both the good guys.
You guys were both the good guys.
Okay, good. But I'm really excited seeing this, this taking that next step, because I do think it's really important for us to, to forge those connections, and making this change last year at this time is really helped us quite a bit. You know, maybe we didn't get everything we wanted, but I think that, you know, especially with the, the earmark that came from, from Assemblymember Cervantes's office, that's huge, that was a big ask for one of our affordable communities, and I want to thank her for that, and thank you for all your work on this, and hopefully we can find ways to really carry forward and find that next step, especially, I love the idea of the, the action days, and the, and the regional collaborations we spoke about when we were in Sacramento. I know that you're working with Eastvale, I spoke a little bit to Mayor Bash and Norco, and we worked with the folks in Hoopa Valley, getting them to sign on either for or against bills. I'd like to see more of that from a regional perspective, so we can wield our, our, you know, weight of this, this entire area, that may provide a little more oomph, I think, in some ways, but thank you.
Thank you.
And it rings more true to our legislators when they see it directly from us, and when they're getting the perspective and analysis directly from us, and not through, you know, League of Cities or another organization. So thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. We appreciate it.
It helps to make it specific to you, it makes them care.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, let's see if we have any questions, comments from the public. Do we have any speakers that would like to address the state and federal advocacy? If so, please approach the podium. All right, seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez, again, it's so nice to meet you in person, we appreciate it. Okay, it's 11:40, we did make up some time. Let's see, how about we break for lunch and come back at 12:10, that gives us 30 minutes. Okay, 12:10, be here or be square.